Ready to go? So I would like to call to order the school committee meeting of Wednesday, February 27th, 2019. It is 6:05 PM. And could I get a roll call, please?
Paul Curran, present.
President Barbara Steffen.
President Gina Stino.
President Ellen Mark.
President Jen Madden.
All right. We are now going to recite the pledge allegiance for anyone who would like to join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone have anything to say? Yes, state your name and address, please.
Yes, Tracy Carney, 461, Chief Justice. I just have a quick question on follow-up. A few meetings ago, actually maybe two months ago or so, we discussed um, the drop-off and pickup out here, and there were some items that were going to be looked into, and I think there were several great comments from the audience, as well as the officer who was here. I just haven't seen any follow-up from email, and I don't know if I missed it, or from the school, or the blackboard, or anything, um, as far as if we're supposed, you know, drop off there, and then, again, today, I just had, you know, some, I think there were some great suggestions, as far as maybe from the crosswalk up the top, um, and telling students where to cross from, um, I guess, and just at every random spot. Um, again, today, I have these students jar out in front of my car, and I know, but still, I just haven't seen any communication. Seeing Mrs. Sullivan, it reminds me of the several communication, I, I, you know, understanding that anytime you have a lot of people getting in and out of one place at a time, it's confusion, but with communication, I think it helps. All I've seen, I saw the sign get posted for the no left turn, um, but there's no enforcement or communication, and in fact, people are told to go left during those hours, and I was actually almost scolded for not cutting someone off who was going left by one of the crossing guards, so it's very, very confusing out there, and I haven't seen, I also don't know if the door, I know it was mentioned that the door was going to be opened earlier in the morning, I'm not sure if that's happening, so I'm just curious what the follow-up on that was, or any, or if I missed it.
And did you, did you go to the building principal and ask the questions?
No, because it was addressed here, so I was just kind of following up and seeing if it's been addressed here, and what has been, if it's.
All right. We've discussed on multiple occasions that a traffic study is needed, and until the traffic study is done, we're going to keep things as they are. A traffic study, the, the money for the traffic study is on the town warrant, so make sure all your friends go to town meeting and vote for it.
So, I, I understand that, thank you for that, um, but it was said that there were some things being done to alleviate that before the traffic study, something that's a long time, and we want to kind of prevent, or just communicate what the procedure should be, and where to drop, and it was going to be mentioned at that, but I think we were having a rally, that was when text to tell was coming out, they were informing to the students, the bike thing was going to be changed, and since, I mean, the traffic study hasn't been done, but the sign was already posted, so are we not enforcing the sign until the traffic study, or is the sign to be enforced, or, I also just wonder what kind of message we're telling our students, like, oh, we posted a sign, the police come out and post a sign, but we don't have to enforce it? I, I don't know.
Can I comment on this?
I just don't know.
No, can you wait just a minute, please?
So, I don't know, I, I'm not trying to stir, I'm just curious. I didn't know if I missed something again, or is it to wait till the traffic study, but I did see the sign go up, and then I see, you know, the people being directed that way.
Yeah, and the sign has actually been up for months. It didn't just go up, it's been up for months. But, but maybe, Mrs. Demus could comment.
I can address a couple of things. We are paying someone to open the door at 7:00 AM. That, that happened almost the next day, and that, she's been there just about every day. What I'm finding is, there's still people coming in much later. Short of people not allowing students to take a left-hand turn, it's causing some very serious gaps. People are so busy coming out, and they're not to take a left-hand turn, they're to take a right-hand turn, I've not heard that. We do have a crossing guard that's there as much as we can, so all those things have been done. What was originally proposed was an extra lane going up, so there would be two coming in and one coming out. We can't legally find the space without knocking out the, the light poles, so that has to be done. And that's where we spoke as a group again, and said that after the traffic study, we need to look at it. It may mean, um, having people paid to direct people as to drop your child off here and turn around, but, you know, they're, they're going right up into the door, so, and then coming back, students need to take a left, and they're waiting, so it's holding the line. It's becoming, it, it's, it's a nightmare, I understand, but it's something that is safer than what we have, uh, by lining up on Pond Street at the bottom of the hill. So we really have to wait now.
Am I correct in thinking, in remembering that we said no changes would be made until the traffic study was done?
Right now, there, we can't really do much of a change.
Right. Okay.
Okay. As somebody who has been kicking this school, and somebody that goes and picks up, it's very, very dangerous. And I just want to be on record, that if somebody gets hurt, that we are going to have to take responsibility. We have 11-year-old children that are running in front of cars, there's no crosswalk up at the area there, the left-hand turn is a joke. We're teaching kids to, to abide by rules when they're, everybody's taking a left. This crossing guard is an angry man who's screaming at my wife, "Come on, let's go, let's go." "I invite you to go out there," but I just want to be on record, if any kid gets hurt here, because we had to wait for a traffic study, for $10,000 traffic study?
No, it's $30,000.
Whatever it is, it's, it, it should be done immediately. It shouldn't wait for a warrant, okay? It's a very dangerous, dangerous intersection. You have 11-year-old children running in front of cars, you gotta, it, it's just a, it's a mess, okay? And it's an embarrassment to this community. I just want to be on record for that, okay?
Mrs. Steffen.
I was just wondering, if, um, do you, are you aware of who designed the new process?
I, all I'm aware of is, is it's an unsafe process.
I have a question, that's my question, though, for you.
Okay.
Do you know who came up with this new procedure?
It's not my job, is it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so who is that?
Um, it's the facilities, the police department, the fire department, and the schools.
And the school administration.
Right. So, so we're waiting on a, a traffic study?
Yes, I mean, per.
So the kid's safety is waiting on a traffic study?
I'm sorry, I was just asking for a little communication, like you said, like if it was, you know, can we drop up?
I'm just clarifying.
Just clarifying, it hasn't happened, and the left turn, and I've been out there, maybe the person's there at nine, but I've been here personally, and there's children waiting at the front door.
Yes, it's.
So, maybe they've missed a day, maybe I only, I'm not here that early every day, at seven rather, um, but I've been here at 7:10 in the door, so, so just little things, but I just haven't seen the communication, and again, I have seen it at the other schools, like, form a second line, do this, and it, and it has worked, you know, of course, there's going to be some people who don't follow the rules, there's going to be some hiccups, and even when, after the traffic study, I'm sure there'll be hiccups, when you need 400 people to get at one place at one time, there always is, I understand that, I just haven't seen any of those communications, saying, maybe if you drop up a little sooner, or, and I'm also asking if the communication to the students, to, to, like, remind them to be aware of where they're crossing, they're on their phone, looking for their parent, and just walking out, so it's just a safety issue, I wouldn't want to see anyone get hurt, so I just wanted to bring it up as a follow-up.
I, I do have, I do have to say, one more comment, and then we're going to move on, but I do have to say that I have been here at dismissal time, I have not been here at drop-off time, because I no longer have a child in the building, but I have been here a lot at drop-off, at pickup time, and it works so much more seamlessly than it did before. It's easier, we have a lot more cars off the road, which before, they were lined up along the side of the road, and you couldn't pass them because of the hill in front of the school. So, at least pickup time in the afternoon, to me, seems fine, I used to get caught in the lot all the time, I've not been caught once in the lot, so that is working better. You know, we, we have constraints, we don't have a checkbook to just pay money to people to do things, and I understand that there's a, I understand that there's a safety issue, I get it, but we have to do things in an orderly way. We can't just change things, we've already changed things two or three times. So until we have the traffic study, we're not going to probably make any changes, we're going to keep things as they are, and we're just doing the best we can with what we have to work with at this point in time.
Can I comment on that?
Um, no, we're going to move on now.
Just one comment on that, please.
I said, I said one more comment, and that was it, because we could go on two hours.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the approval of the warrant. And do I have a motion to approve warrant 19-14S?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Hi, Paul Curran.
Hi, Barbara Steffen.
Hi, Gina Stino.
Hi, Ellen Mark.
Hi, Jen Madden.
So, next item on the agenda is the superintendent search update, and we have been very busy people.
Very busy, and, um, we, we put this at the head of the agenda, we're expecting a guest here to help explain in our process, and he's not here yet, so I will.
He's probably stuck in traffic.
Probably stuck in traffic. I'll model through as best I can on this, so, and I'm going to read so that I don't forget to say anything important. So, "In an effort to fully engage and inform all our stakeholders in the superintendent search process, the school committee will be giving regular updates of where we are in the process at our regular meetings. In addition, we've set up a tab on our district website, which will, which we will be updating as information becomes available. It's our hope that together, as an educational community, we conduct a fully transparent and inclusive search. We look forward to collaborating with all stakeholders to articulate our superintendent profile and create a vision of leadership that will support and maintain Cohasset Public Schools' long tradition of educational excellence." And that said, I'm just going to recap the timeline of, of what we've done so far. So as we all know, on January 18th, Superintendent Demus announced her retirement effective June 30th of this year. On the 31st of January, the, uh, school committee issued our first public statement about the commencement of the superintendent search. On February 6th, the committee met with representatives of, um, NESTF, the New England School Development Council, and MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. On February 7th, the committee met with representatives from the Cape Cod Collaborative and from the Collins Center of UMass, and, and at that meeting, we deliberated on all four presentations, and we eliminated the Cape Cod Collaborative and MASC from consideration. Each firm, all four firms presented how they would go about conducting a search for new superintendent schools for Cohasset, including the support they would offer via a proposal. Committee members all asked questions of each firm, and all of these meetings were posted as public meetings were held as such. In the intervening time, the committee members consulted with committee, school committee members from other towns who recently completed their own superintendent searches, about their experiences with the process and the firms that they chose. We spoke with Kingham and Situate, who use NESTF, we spoke with Falmouth, who use the Cape Cod Collaborative, we spoke with Sudbury, Beverly, and the Westport Community Schools, who all use the Collins Center. The committee reconvened on February 14th to deliberate an open session, the pros and cons of the final two firms, and we ultimately selected the Collins Center of the University of Massachusetts to assist the committee in our search. We felt the Collins Center understood the district in terms of the events of the past nine months and their impact on our educational community. They felt confident that a quality candidate could be found and hired within our timeline. Collins Center is, um, a firm of full-time employees, they don't hire outside consultants, and that also appealed to us, that we would be working with people who do this every day, all day long, and not consultants, um, that other firms would, would contract with. They have a dedicated team of four full-time people with extensive experience in educational placements. Throughout the course of each meeting with all four firms, the topic of how to handle internal superintendent candidates was discussed, and all four firms agreed that if the committee felt there was going to be one or more strong internal candidates for the position, we should vet those candidates first. And all four firms agreed that the presence of strong internal candidates in an external search could reduce the applicant pool, as many external candidates would opt out and not apply. We believe that the district may have strong internal candidates, and we instructed the Collins Center to present a strategy and a timeline to vet any internal candidates. In the event that the committee feels it needs to continue the search beyond internal candidates, the work done in that process may be used to continue the search to include external candidates. Should the commit, committee need to expand the search, we still anticipate hitting our target date of the mid-May appointment. On February 21st, we met in open meeting with Mr. Ray Shirtlift and Mr. Ed Gottgart, who just arrived, um, to review that strategy, which we are presenting tonight. And an update with the timeline, as of tonight, will be communicated to the parent community on blackboard, and to the staff via the superintendent's office after our meeting, and we'll also issue a press release. Our timeline is very aggressive, it's almost March 1st, and we're looking to hire a superintendent, but we're all committed, um, to get this done. So at this point, Ed, if you'd like to come up, he's going to take us through a couple of timelines of, um, beginning of our process.
You want me to do the computer?
Um, yep.
Which means?
Or.
I gotta get my glasses.
Okay. Or, or, Michael, can you do it for him?
I can, I'm sorry.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you very much for your vote of confidence, we're very excited about, uh, being your partner in this effort to find the next superintendent. First one you want is the, is the timeline?
Yes, please. I, I wonder if I didn't say, I thought I sent them all.
And while we're, while we're looking, um.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay, just reiterate what you said earlier, which is, um, process that we have recommended, the internal candidate fits nicely in with the regular search process. We would do everything the same, except one thing, we wouldn't have a screening committee, because we wouldn't need a screening committee. The school committee would function as their screening committee for internal candidates. So everything we do from here on out, on the internal schedule, really does tie in neatly with the overall search, if we need to do the overall search. We're not going to lose any time, it's not going to really cost any more money, it's going to actually potentially cost less, because if the school committee chooses to go with the internal candidate, end of the search. If they choose to go on with the full search, then what we would do is set up a screening committee, and then pick up the regular schedule, which gets us into a, like a late, late April, early May timeframe, in order to find our, uh, find those candidates. So, I apologize, we don't have this, but.
We'll, we'll have all of these up on the website, there's already a superintendent search tab on the, on the school committee.
So the, the, the next, uh, I don't know, we've, we've, have we posted internally the, uh, the position?
The, it'll be posted tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, so as of tomorrow, the.
Or tonight, I'm still awake.
Yeah, okay, the, uh, the vacancy will be posted internally, a little different than what we would, we would post externally, obviously, um, it's just inviting internal candidates to apply for the position. The focus groups, which we have scheduled for next Monday, and one on Tuesday, are really part of the overall process, whichever way that we, we decide to go, whether it's internal or external, the focus groups will be, uh, all scheduled for next week. And we've got, um, four of them scheduled, five of them scheduled on the fourth, on the fourth, Monday the fourth, beginning with my favorite, we're, uh, meeting with the students, the student council, leadership in both middle school and high school, we'll meet with them at 12 o'clock, uh, on Monday, then we'll meet with the leadership team, central office leadership team, that'll be from 1:00 to 2:00. Secondary staff, uh, from 2:30 to 3:30, elementary staff from 3:45 to 4:45, and then, very importantly, at 6:30, there'll be an open meeting for the community and parents to come and share with us, uh, the answer to some, several questions. The first question we want to know is, what are the qualities, attributes, skills, experiences, background, that you'd like to see in, in a new superintendent? That's the first one. The second question is, what are the issues that that person will have to address in the first six to 12 months that they're here? What are the priorities? The third question is, are there any things that, that happen here in Cohasset that are really important for us to know, and for candidates to know, kind of traditions, customs, beliefs, uh, those kinds of things? And then the last question is, it's just kind of an open, is there anything we haven't asked you that you'd like to tell us? The purpose of the focus groups is really to develop what's called a successful candidate profile. What we're trying to do is to give the school committee, and perhaps ultimately, uh, the screening committee, some criteria by which to evaluate the candidates for purposes of aligning their skills and abilities, uh, and, and background with what it is the, the district says it would like to see in its new superintendent. So that's kind of the first thing, it, it really does provide some, some screening criteria. Uh, the second thing that it provides, which I think is, is kind of a, um, an unwritten piece of, of importance, is the, when a new candidate is identified, this is a rich source of information about what's the community they're looking for. It helps that candidate develop their entry plan. Every superintendent will be doing an entry plan, and part of that entry plan really needs to be answering those questions. What are you going to spend your time in, on the first six to 12 months that you're here? What are the things that you're, you're going to focus on? So, uh, it's, it's kind of multipurpose, the, the results of this, these focus groups are really multipurpose. We did add one on Tuesday at 10 o'clock for parents and community members who can't make it on the evening before. So I'll be back to do, uh, to do that one on, on Tuesday morning at, at 10 o'clock. Same place, we're going to do all, all the focus groups here. So tell your friends, tell your neighbors, please invite them to come, the more the merrier, we, we like to have good, good turn-ons in these focus groups. It really does inform the process, it really helps us, uh, find out what it is that the community really values and needs in a new superintendent, so we can do the, the kind of aligning, the kind of matching that, that really is important. Uh, so those are the focus groups, again, 12 o'clock with our student council reps from high school and middle school, uh, at 12, 1:00 with leadership team, 2:30 secondary, 3, 3:45 elementary, 6:30 that night, Monday night at 6:30, and then again, 10 o'clock the next morning, for those folks who can't make it, for the community and for parents to come and share with us, um, what, what you'd like to see in a new superintendent.
So, the elementary, obviously, is both Dear Hill and Osgood, um, at that time, um, leadership includes all building principals and directors. We will not be present, because we want everyone to feel open and honest, um, in, in your, in what you, you know, what you want, how you want to answer your questions, um, and, um, after all of that is done, we'll have an online survey for those who cannot attend the focus group. So we really would value the, the, the one-to-one, you know, the, the personal, um, interaction to develop, uh, to answer the questions.
If you haven't participated in the focus group, that's fine, you're welcome, there's, there's no prequalifications, you don't have to know anything, just come with your own perspectives, your own view, your own, uh, values, that's what we're looking for, we're looking to hear from you. This is not something we're trying to educate you about, you're educating us, so, uh, please come, I'd love to have you come. Dr. Shirtlift and I will be here on Monday to, to do the, uh, the, the long day, and then I'll be here on Tuesday by myself, probably.
And, and for people that can't make to get to the focus group, there'll be an online survey.
Correct. And that survey will be available, uh, from March 5th to March 8th, it'll be open. And the reason we, we have a s, kind of short window is because we and Collins Center have to give the school committee a profile, um, very soon, very quickly, after these focus groups, so that they, they can begin thinking about the kind of qualities and, and skills and experiences they want to see in a new superintendent. So, sorry for the quick turnaround.
Does that go out on blackboard, if either the parents know?
It will go out on blackboard.
Yes.
And it, as the, the more the merrier, we, we'd love to have as many people as can come, come, because it is, it is a better opportunity to be heard, when you're there, it, it generates inter, not only interest, but it generates some, some questions in your mind that you might want to have answered, uh, while you're there, so it's, it's, it's very, uh, very helpful, very helpful for, for all of us. So that's the, uh, those are the focus groups. We, we have given the school committee a draft, the job description of superintendent, we suggested it be updated, I don't know when the last time we did it, but take a look at it again, we've given you a, a kind of a draft. The, uh, I guess we're going to set March 13th as the deadline for internal applications, and then, uh, we'll, we'll begin at that point, um, sharing with the school committee not only the, the results of the focus group, but, uh, also, uh, the information that we get from candidates, uh, internal candidates. The next step in the process would be forums, and this is an opportunity for you all to meet the candidates, and a candidate, depending on how many there are, um, and to ask them questions, they'll, they'll, I'll probably moderate these forums. And I think we've scheduled three forums?
Yes.
There are three forums scheduled, um, these will be on March 18th, so it's a little ways down the road. Internal candidate forum with secondary staff, again, will be on, uh, 2:30, with the elementary staff, 3:45, and at 6:30, 6 o'clock, at 6:30, we'll have a candidate forum with parents and community members. This will be an opportunity to come, assuming we have internal candidates, if we don't have internal candidates, we're going to go right to the full search. But if we have internal candidates, this is, this is the opportunity to come and see them, talk to them, uh, ask them questions, hear what they have to say. We will provide feedback forums, so you don't have to sit at these forums and raise your hand and say, hey, you know, if you have a question, certainly, but if there's, if there's something you'd like to share with the school committee and with, with us, uh, we'd be happy to have it, we'll give you forums to do at the end of the, at the end of the sessions, at the end of the forums, just to tell us what you think about the candidates. And if we've got snow dates and holidays, and if it snows on the 4th, and then moves to the 5th, if it snows on the 18th, I would be more surprised, this being, you know, not bad tonight, three to five inches, light snow, it's going to be over by 7 o'clock tomorrow morning, piece of cake, it's a light and fluffy.
We've got time.
Okay, that'll be fine, it's going to be fine. There will be school tomorrow, sorry, kids, I think it's school. So, uh, that's the, that's the forum, and then that will be the end of the process. At that point, it, it then goes to the school committee. They'll have an interview, I guess, on the 20th of March, there'll be a finalist interview, public meeting here, uh, with the finalist candidates, and, uh, perhaps even the decision that they make. And again, if, if that, if, if there are no internal candidates, we would revert to the original schedule, and we'd pick it up, um, with a, an orientation meeting, we'd set up a screening committee, and we'd give the orientation, we'd meet the screening committee and help them understand their roles and responsibilities, but we're not calling down that road quite yet, let's see if we get some internal candidates.
So, it's, just so everyone knows, the timeline won't also be on the website, so under the school committee tab, there's now a school, um, superintendent search 2019, and you'll be able to find the timeline, which might be helpful if you want to attend a focus group, you'll know when it's meeting.
Jen, um, just so you know, there'll be a blackboard connect going out, um, either late tonight or early in the morning, um, announcing all of the focus groups and times, and encouraging people to participate, and it will go out to every family in the district.
Great. Does anyone have any questions?
Concerns?
No.
No. Why? Easy, easy.
Easy.
Easy, easy. So, see a lot of people Monday night?
Yes.
Is not Tuesday more? The more the merrier.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, the link for the superintendent's search is under the school committee tab, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if there are no questions, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
We have presents, we have guests, we have two guests tonight. Caitlin is not here, Caitlin Papleton, who is going to present, um, a C E F check for $300, um, that is coming as, um, what's a C E F check?
It's a, it's a, Safe Harbor.
Yeah, that's not Safe Harbor, no, it is. Safe Harbor is giving us $300 in order to, uh, partner in the funding for the showing of Next, which we're showing on the 26th of March with our panel. And we've shown it to staff already, so we'll keep that, but, um, I need an acceptance of the gift for $300 from Safe Harbor.
Do I have a motion to accept the gift from Safe Harbor in the amount of $300?
So.
Okay.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Hi, Paul Curran.
Hi, Barbara Steffen.
Hi, Gina Stino.
Hi, Ellen Mark.
Hi, Jen Madden.
So it's showing Tuesday to 26?
Correct.
At, in the evening, right, like 7?
Seven, uh, 6:45.
6:45, okay, thank you.
Uh, we also have a.
Got to get it in my computer.
A check for $1,014 from, uh, the PSO. Uh, PSO approved $990 grant for kindergarten teachers with 33 whiteboards, similar to the ones purchased for the first and second grade, and they have also approved, uh, $24 for Jill Bradley for his microphones, as the price changed since he's. as the price changed since he submitted his request. So it is a check from, um, Cohasset Parent School Organization for one thousand fourteen dollars.
And do I have a motion to accept the, um, P S O's grant in the amount of one thousand fourteen dollars?
So moved.
Go second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Barbara Steffen.
Aye, Gina Stino.
Aye, Ellen Mar.
Aye, Jen Madden.
Thank you. And there's another one at the back.
There is, um, Caitlin is going to present.
Oh, okay.
It's a C E F grant. Do we have it? Because we do have the, is it, it must be, it's staple, that's why, I'm sorry. I looked at it as a packet, right. It was included in the P S O. It's, um, Peter Van Assip is, uh, coaching, guiding, uh, advising, um, in a grant request for seven hundred and fifty dollars for water testing kits. It is a student-led independent research project that is being done. It's a research where students are planning, uh, something to be, uh, encouraged. They are going to be working collaboratively with the Cohasset Water Department and looking at the results of testing our school water. So it was a grant that's out of cycle, but seemed extremely important. Caitlin is going to be here and I think that she probably is a principal. So it's seven hundred and fifty dollars from, um, C E F board for, um, water testing kits.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the C E F gift of seven hundred and fifty dollars for water testing kits?
So moved.
Go second?
Second, that's Jen, Jen Steffen.
All in favor, please?
Aye, Paul Kearney.
Aye, Barbara Steffen.
Aye, Gina Stino.
Aye, Ellen Mar.
Aye, Jen Madden. Very exciting, thank you so much.
It is, and it's important to continually, um, acknowledge these gifts that we don't have money in the budget for. So it's wonderful that we have these groups that support us in this way.
Our hydration station is up and morphing.
That's wonderful. You can come in someday and go up your lawn.
We're doing well. Uh, we have with us this evening, uh, the middle school sixth grade team. If they would bring their chairs up.
Raise some chairs.
I'll let Greg Gashi introduce them. And, um, had a great visit with them, they've sent it to the staff as well. It was very exciting, um, and then being that middle school person, I, you know, I love their, their doing and their dedication and their ties.
So you could stand on stand or you pull chairs up.
So hopefully you can.
So, we're gonna do a couple things tonight. I'm gonna start by doing just a small, brief overview of literally goal one of our action step, of our action plan for the middle school. And then I'm gonna put it on over to the sixth grade team to go more in depthly of, um, their team, their visit to, or some of the team processes that they've experienced. And then it's gonna come back to me and I'm gonna go over the other goals of the action plan that we've been, um, really working through this year. So the first goal was to develop the teams, um, and through the action plan timeline, this year was just sixth grade, next year will be seventh grade as it's written on the action plan. However, um, there's only three grades, so if you team sixth grade and team seventh grade, by default, eighth grade's not a team. So the entire middle school will be teamed next year. And what we're doing this year is working through quite a few things to then get a really good perspective and, and ideas on going forward and what teaming will look like, you know, for the entire middle school, but particularly starting with seventh, eighth grade next year. So, um, earlier in the year, we were asked, uh, we were given the advice to go to Norton Middle School. They're seen by Bill Downey and Nelms to be a model teaming middle school. And, um, so we went.
Could you just for, I'm sure there are a lot of people that are listening that don't exactly know what teaming is.
Mm-hmm.
Would you mind just, oh, you're gonna.
Yes, yes. Yeah, they got that. Yes. So the sixth grade team has come here today to present their takeaways from the Norton visit, as well as some insight to some of the challenges that have been posed by, you know, that structural change. So by putting in teaming, it was absolute structural change by, to sixth grade. And absolutely some of their successes. And I'm gonna send it all up.
Okay, so I'm Debbie Hathaway, and I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to have us come here and share with you our experiences this year with teaming. And it started for us in August when we came back to work, we got our schedules, and we said, oh, you're a team. So we said, okay, we've done teaming before, we can do that. So we started meeting with Carrie, sport, um, two or three times a week for an hour. We'd meet and we started our, our teaming, which for us was discussing the students that we have and concerns. But after a while, it became clear that we were overwhelmed and underprepared to do, to have, to team effectively. So with Carrie's support, she suggested let's take a step back and let's have the goal of this year to be is learn as much as we can about teaming and how that might fit into Cohasset Middle School. So we did a lot of research, and as Carrie already mentioned, I think Carrie and Pat, I think they, you, um, organized the trip for us to spend a whole day at Norton Middle School, where they're a model school, and we were able to take away some really good ideas from them. Some, you know, some that looked like they would work here, some that looked like they won't, won't work here, but we got a lot of, um, nice ideas. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Donna and Amelia and, um, Yelcet, Peter, and our other colleagues here who are also gonna be speaking are Amy Weislinger and, um, Chelsea Brock. Again, Gabriella Wima.
Um, so I think, uh, I think I'm next up. So we have the timeline up here because, um, we actually presented this to the staff last week, and some of the staff members are newer, so they didn't understand the timeline. Um, our visit to Norton really goes all the way back to the NEAS report, where, um, that was the accreditation report that we went through, um, some number of years ago. And it had several recommendations, and then of course we did a self-study, followed by the Nelms report, the action plan. The action plan, one of the items was to explore teaming, so that's fun. Okay, under the NEAS, the recommendations, there were a lot of recommendations in that report, but as we went through to do our research, we looked at the things that pertain to teaming. So some things that we pulled out of that report were, we really wanted to understand what it meant to do cross-disciplinary learning opportunities. We really wanted to examine the effect of class size on teaching, course loads. An in- an interesting thing came up out of the NEAS report, and that was there is inequitable distribution of school personnel between middle and high school. Not that we were really looking at that, but we were interested in, okay, how does all of this fitting together? And most of all, ensuring that the needs of all of our students are being met, that's the number one idea. How do we do that through teaming? And then lastly, looking at research in order to do this. The Nelms report said, uh, similar things. Um, you can see, again, it's calling out interdisciplinary curriculum. It's talking about meeting all the needs of students, and especially tier-two students. We're very interested in seeing, okay, how will teaming affect that, that population? And then, um, projects, critical thinking, um, moving our students forward in, in that realm. So we start, we had a two-pronged approach. First thing that we did was some research, and the second thing that we did was go ahead and go to Norton. I'm gonna turn it over to Donna, she's gonna talk about research.
Um, just to back up a little bit, what is a team? A team is one group of teachers that have the same cohort of students. And the idea is for those teachers to meet on a regular basis, both to discuss the student needs and also to plan interdisciplinary units, so that the students are making connections across disciplines. Um, so, but in a nutshell, that's what teaming is. So, um, for many of us who had been here for more than a few years, we had teams. I've been here, this is my eighth year, so for my first five years, we were working in teams. So when we came in September and they said that we would be teamed, we automatically jumped right back into the hats that we had on before. And we were reminded several times by both the reports that were done and by administrators, that might not be what best practice is, is in terms of teaming. That's what you used to do, that doesn't mean what, that's not what the current expectation is. So that's why we took a step back. We really dove into some research on our own, because we wanted to know what best practices were, so that we were meeting those expectations. So just a few things that we learned that we thought were important to pass along. So there's been a lot of research on what middle school students need. And teaming, it comes up in every single report as the best structure for students in grade six through eight. Every report we have decked. As a matter of fact, um, the National Association of Secondary School Principals survey going way back to two thousand and two, eighty-four percent of schools, um, implement teaming, highly effective schools, ninety percent. Yeah, I'm sorry. So, so teaming has been practiced for a long time, it's considered the best structure for sixth, um, eighth. So why does teaming work so well for students? Well, when kids are in a team, particularly between sixth, um, uh, sixth and eighth grade, they have an improved self-concept and a sense of school membership. They also make greater connections with the adults in their lives. And as a result, their academic, um, performance improves. Teaming is also shown in the research to benefit teachers. It's, it's a better working environment to work on a team, it's to be working together and collaborating all the time. Um, so some, in considerations for implementation. Uh, I think that, um, Deb Hathaway had mentioned that when we showed up in September, we showed up with not a really clear idea of what the expectation was for us and, um, what good teaming looked like. We were relying upon what we used to know. So we think that in order for teaming to be implemented and for us to move from a junior high model into a true teamed school, um, some professional development would be necessary. We did do our own research, which we shared with staff, but perhaps some more professional development. We currently do have common planning time, which is essential. So for, for teachers to work as a team, they need to have regular common planning time to plan. To talk about students, that should be about fifty percent of the time, talking about students and how we can best meet individual student needs. But about fifty percent of the time should be to plan interdisciplinary units. And that's what the big difference from when we were teamed earlier. The majority of our time when we were teamed earlier was talking about student needs, meeting with parents, both very important things, but we didn't do a lot of that interdisciplinary, um, planning. And then the third thing that we learned from the research that we did not have this year is that, um, the National Association, um, identif- uh, said that teams that have identified leaders that serve as coordinators are more likely to benefit from teaming. So we did, we used to have team leaders, my, when we were teamed before, we, um, had a stipended position for a team leader. This year, as a team, we did not have a team leader, um, but the research does show that you do benefit from having the team leader. So I had mentioned earlier that it's very important that adolescents feel a connection to the adults in their lives. And, um, all us, a lot of the studies we looked at talked about the importance of two things, that teaming is very important, but staff-student ratios are important. Peter?
Yep.
I'm flying. So when we, when we came in late August, um, we noticed that our class sizes had grown considerably as a result of teaming. And the reason was, they needed to put every sixth grader with one teaching team. Previously, there were two teaching, two teaching teams. Catherine Douglin, for example, is the other sixth grade E L A teacher. She had two classes of sixth grade, and I would teach five. This year, we had, um, just one E L A teacher, one social studies teacher, one math teacher, one science teacher. So this is an example in, uh, one core subject in the middle school. In, uh, grade six, a core teacher would have a hundred and twenty students this year with an average of twenty-four students per class. Grade seven teacher this year in the same subject, subject has seventy-four students with an average of fourteen point eight students per class. The teacher that teaches both seventh and eighth in that core subject has seventy-nine students with an average of fifteen point eight students per class. And the eighth grade teacher in that subject has seventy-four students with an average of fourteen point eight in class. So our, what we saw as problematic was the fact that we wanted to team and we wanted to give the students the team experience, but not at the expense of class size, because class size is important as well.
We, we wanted to give some examples of how that class size affects us in our content area.
Oh, yeah.
So for example, I'm a science teacher, and when I have class sizes of, say, like, twenty-six, it's very difficult for me to conduct the labs the way that I used to. So for example, ideally, I, I try to have two students on a lab, like if they're using a scale or whatever lab they're conducting, I try to have two to the equipment, but now I have to have three to four. And I just find that, um, it's, if you have four students on a scale, they're only gonna have maybe two tries at using it, whereas if you had two, they might have four tries at using it. So it reduces their ability to hone their skill.
In E L A class, what that might look like is, um, in sixth grade, it's very important that students are given feedback on their writing while they're writing. So we work in a writer's workshop model, so that while students are working on their writing, it's very important that I meet with them then, um, and give them feedback then when they still have a chance to make revisions to their writing. To give a student in sixth grade back a paper that has writing all over it and the grades already on it, they literally look at the grade and, and don't do any revising. So the best practice is to give them all that feedback in a writer's workshop. While meeting with, um, an average of twenty-four students in a class, in writing workshop, obviously, where there are time constraints, um, you really don't get as much time to have this in-depth of a meeting with each student to talk about their writing.
In social studies, much like what Yel said, I do a lot of simulations, and those have been impacted by the class sizes. But also, I have spent, and I think we all have, an awful lot of time doing more administrative tasks. For example, we're communicating with parents and students and grading, and that's taking away from being able to write, you know, more fresh, new, um, engaging lesson plans that maybe incorporate S E L and other, you know, important initiative, initiatives that we've been working on for the past few years.
So, um, I think of it more in general terms, like are we using our resources effectively for all the children in the middle school? So are the sixth graders getting the same attention that their eighth grade brother or sister are getting in school? Or whatever. So, and to me, the, me teaching math, and I think, uh, more general is, I think, you're not gonna get the kids, my theory is, you're not gonna get the kids to want to work unless you make some sort of connection with the child. So I always have this back and forth every year where, you know, I've tried to get to know the kids, but then they get, you know, get a little out of control, and then you bring them back. So with, it's just much more difficult to make those connections with kids and, um, get them to say, yeah, I love math, this is, this is great.
And turnaround time as well, so the extra time it takes to grade the extra paper, the, the extra tests, takes more time, obviously. So maybe when you had it fresh in your mind that you didn't understand something in math and the turnaround time was quick, we could address that right away. And the extra time that's taking to grade the extra paper is not, isn't necessarily as fresh in the mind, and we can't intervene as quickly as we would like to.
Chelsea and I team teach, um, in the math lab, yeah, plus. So we just felt that this was an important consideration moving forward with teaming through the middle school, that we're also examining class size, and maybe distribution of class size as well, between the three grades.
Okay, so I'm gonna speak a little bit about the actual Norton site visit. So with all of that research, you know, in our minds and thinking about teaming, we went to visit, um, Norton, and I think Doctor Solomon and, um, Carrie Gashi for setting that up for us and allowing us to use our professional development to do that. The first thing that we noticed is that they have a philosophical difference. It is truly a middle school. They, their whole idea is to teach the students to love to learn. That is their goal. In everything that they do, it's all about, hey, does this help the students to really love and, and be engaged in learning? Um, another idea that we noticed was team policies. So team policies are unified across all the subject areas. So talking about a team like us, we would make decisions about things like, um, weights for assessments. So throughout all the content area, that would be the same. And currently, that's not always the case. Make-up work, the policies that deal with make-up work, retakes, behavior, a unified approach to behavior. What we consider an infraction might be different, but we would, as a team, decide these things. Uh, frequency of homework, testing schedules, you know, E L A on Mondays, science on Wednesday, that type of thing. Um, there's also a difference in time on learning. On average, um, sixth grade students at- On average, um, sixth grade students at Norton have two hundred more minutes of math and ELA combined per week than students in Cohasset do. And they achieve that through the structure of their schedules. I'm gonna talk about, um, tier-two support. We're very interested in seeing how that school utilized tier-two support. So, we have, um, at Norton anyway, they have something called the ICE block. ICE stands for intervention, correction, and enrichment. And it's a little bit complicated to explain it, but it suffice to say that as, say, a science teacher, instead of seeing my students five times a week, I would actually see them all six times. You get one extra session per week with each of your classes, that's huge. That allows you to go ahead and intervene for students that are not understanding the material, to make corrections if the whole class kinda didn't get something, or to enrich, to push those students a little bit further that have the ability to get there. Flexibility, um, they're very committed to flexibility. You can see their building's quite different than ours. Doesn't really make sense to talk about the building structure because we have what we have. But, um, they have flexibility in other ways. For example, they don't have a bell schedule. And that allows the teams to make adjustments. If you need an hour and a half for ELA, on a certain day, you can do that because you don't have bells disrupting you. Um, they even are committed to flexibility in terms of their furniture. So, they have a bunch of grants that are going on right now to get the types of furniture that we see in our Learning Commons. They're so helpful to be able to just like, with a flip of a button on the bottom, to be able to move and rearrange your furniture and make different groupings. Um, they even have flexibility in terms of like their teaming structures. In other words, an eighth grade team doesn't have to look like a sixth grade team, so it can be different laterally. Um, they achieve project-based learning, which is the int- like, one of the hugest goals of teaming, is to really engage the students in projects. They do that through a block called AIA, which is Academics in Action. And what they do is they support the ELA and mathematics doing projects. And they, it's like every other day, they'll do, like, an AIA block will be on ELA and AIA will be on math. And I'll give you an example of what we saw when we were there. So, we were there around Christmas time. And in math, they were learning percentages. So, in the AIA block, the students were making these virtual, um, virtual stores and they had a bunch of products that they were selling. And then they had to have a Black Friday sale and they had to know the percentages off so they could buy each other's stuff. So, cool, right, you guys?
It was really cool, it was great.
Yeah, we loved it.
I just wanna, I just wanna clarify in case somebody heard this, they have a schedule, they just don't have bells. Right. So, I, I, no, no, maybe it was just me that thought it was, okay. Teaming this year. Um, so, we feel like we've made some small steps. We really dove into research, best practice research, we read a lot of research. Going to Norton was extremely helpful. But we don't really feel yet that we're meeting the expectations of best practices. Like, when we really dove in and looked at it, we really feel we need, um, to do more interdisciplinary learning, um, for our students. Um, but what we have done this year is every time we have two preps, we've met. Um, which has been two or three times a week. Carrie has been there with us, she's been giving us a lot of guidance in terms of what teaming should look like, um, and, and where we should move with our research. Um, we have discussed student success a lot. Um, like, we, we talk, we all have the same students, which is incredibly helpful and we talk about our students. And when we're talking about our students and we're identifying that a student might need extra help with something or might need a little bit of a push with something, we can all strategize together how we can do that. Um, so that's been wonderful. Um, some of the things we think that are important moving forward is professional development, to move from a junior high model to a team teaching model. Optimal student-teacher ratios that are balanced between the three grades. Interdisciplinary instruction and coordination during planning time. So, we wanna spend more of our planning time, now that our research has concluded, more of our planning time planning those units and, um, develop the schedule that supports teaming. And there we are, there, as a whole middle school. Um, so, I wanna thank our sixth grade team, um, as they, you know, very bravely reported and we, I think one of the reasons why I've been so successful this year working as a team to go forward is because they are very honest, they are very candid. And, you know, they will talk about the obstacles, but they don't let the obstacles stop them. So, they'll say, "Okay, so this is what, this is what we need to work through. How do we work through it together? And how do we make sure that seventh and eighth grade kinda benefit from what we're doing this year?" So, they've been, um, extremely brave and wonderful with, with just going through this whole process. They're an unbelievably hard-working, um, professionals. And, um, I'm really, really, really excited to continue this process with them. And we've had some tough meetings and it doesn't matter because,
It's the beginning of the year.
So, yeah, yeah, I mean, there were definitely like, yeah, there was definitely some tough meetings, but, um, just their level of professionalism is amazing and I am so grateful to be going through this process with them, so. Um, so, I'll run through the other pieces of our action plan. So, goal two was to increase community involvement in our school. Um, some of the things that we've done this year is our Twitter account, the middle school newspaper, which is also, it's on, yeah, it's cool. It is, we have it hanging up all over the middle school, they do an amazing job. Our level of dedication is great. Um, we're looking at a new information system that will help us get all that information out in a more timely manner to everybody on all different levels. And, um, a newsletter will be starting in March, so I'm actually taking it over, um, and, you know, and establishing middle, but, the class at middle school, its own newsletter, more vibrant, you know, make it fun like a newsletter should be. Um, so, when we're looking at goal three, to develop a unique middle school culture, one of the things that we're really trying to do this year, one of these things that I believe as, you know, the associate principal leading this year, the middle school, when it comes to developing a unique middle school culture, we have everything that we need in the building. When it comes to the staffing, what I try and do is I try and empower the staff to take ownership of forwarding their big ideas. They have great ideas, they have great thoughts, they have great things that they wanna do that support our vision and mission statement at Classic Middle School. And with that, some great things have already started happening this year. For example, um, some of our project-based learning stuff, where we're gonna be, start to diventate the figures and, and do more of that. Um, so with that goes, you know, outreach, we'll be connecting and skyping with professionals from NASA. Um, there's a component of that, I don't wanna give too much of it away because I know the teachers have worked really hard to, to roll that out themselves. Um, but, you know, we're gonna be looking at time with senior citizens. Um, we're gonna be having guest speakers, there's gonna be an amazing museum walk and all are going to be welcome to that. In addition to that, it kinda spearheaded The Boy Who Harnesses the Wind, um, which that is now going to be, is being done by sixth grade. Um, and it, you know, it's kinda like a one-book kind of one-grade model. Kids really grasp onto it, um, and now we're looking at a student slash family fundraiser, if you will. And, you know, the, the funds are going to, uh, different communities in different countries that are in need. In addition to that, in the future, just based on our curriculum, we're looking at a community service project coming through the social studies curriculum, as well as the sustainability symposium that is done by the librarian or our librarian Kathy Sarudy, that's already in place. So, those are all pieces throughout the day academically that we're, we're really looking into bringing more of the community in, um, and doing more within the community. On top of that, we now do Student of the Week, and here have Ben. So, those are two students, oh, you can't see the shirt that well, but those are the shirt, the back of the shirts that they get. And what you see is, in, I could've used the pointer, couldn't I?
Oh, okay.
Um, so this says skipper, and then this is, you know, this spirit, these are the pieces of our creed that go down the back and then down here is, is the creed. And what we constantly say around the middle school is, you know, you're exemplifying, you're living the creed. You're totally living the creed, you're doing what you need to do to exemplify our mantra, which is living the creed. Um, so, we do this, there's another student, uh, Doc there, looks over here, I'll show you. That's my, um, so, there's another student, that was actually our first student of the week. So, these come every week and all, I just get emails from teachers saying, you know, "When I have this student that just did this remarkable thing, this amazing thing today, or this week, and I really, I think they should be shined," and I, excellent, bring them down. They get a shirt, we tweet them out, we write to their parents, we send the pictures to their parents, let them know, um, that they're, they're living the skipper creed and it, it, it should be exemplified. Um, the other things we're doing, we're doing some teacher models, so we're doing some teachers that are inviting other teachers into their room just to see the great things that are going on. Um, we do pieces of flipped faculty meetings, which we're having a lot more faculties speak. Um, generally, two to three different groups, a faculty meeting, so it's not me up there, it's the staff sharing and engaging with each other. Um, and then our award ceremony this year, we've invited parents to, for the students who are receiving the awards. Um, we don't tell the students, so let us go home to the parents. And information goes home to the parents saying, "Your student's been chosen, please don't tell them to show up, you know, on this day and time." Um, they also receive a shirt. In addition to that, the format, uh, format of our, um, award ceremony has changed. Students, I'm seeing now. So, we have students up there, you know, running the show, um, as well as this, because we had some students start trimester one, I had some intrigue by other students for trimester two. They wanna perform at it. I had a student that said, you know, "Actually, I, I can sing and play the guitar and I'd like to do it." And I said, "Right, there's a spot for you." So, we're actually gonna be having students perform at this next one as well. And that's the goal, the goal is to keep growing with, with everyone that we do. Um, and all of these pieces help define who we are and expand who we are. So, I'm skipping all the way to goal eight because the other goals have to do with next year and we're focusing right now on, on pieces we're doing this year. And it's to improve the transitions to grades five and six and then eight and nine. So, I'll be working with Principal Sullivan as well as Principal Scott. Um, and we'll be looking through the lens, I'll be looking through the lens specifically, of understanding middle schoolers' development. With that being said, understanding the middle school schedule of their transitions all day, every day. So, and trying to, to find the best way, um, to prepare students within their own developmental lens to all those changes that will be coming. Not just coming in, but then going to high school. And then goal nine is restructure utility and advisory. This is a smaller part to a bigger scheduling initiative. And as this grade team had spoke about, um, we do have a scheduling committee. We are looking at, at a, a pretty significant revamp. Um, we have some great thoughts and ideas, we've met twice already. It's a nice combination of teachers, nice combination of staff. Um, and I've been really, really impressed, um, with their, their, their level of speed going forward and understanding the importance of the time on learning and students, anything we can do to, you know, up their, their academics and their learning in general. Um, and that includes teaming, tiered intervention, time on learning, advisory, SEL, um, and specifically, uh, you know, looking at Castleman Five Competencies and how to get them in our day, um, better access to the specialist, different ways to access a specialist, and curriculum that reflects middle school development and learning styles. So, we've met twice and in both those times, all that came up as pieces that we have to make sure that we're keeping in mind and understanding when we're creating our schedule that totally supports the team model. Oh, yes, this is just one example. Um, so I was walking by a Spanish class and, um, it totally looks like they're doing a relay 'cause they are, they're doing a relay. And, I know, right, we totally know why they're doing a relay, right? 'Cause they're conjugating verbs. Have you ever seen kids so excited and so willing to run up to the board to conjugate Spanish verbs? And I walked by this and I was like, "This is amazing, this is exactly what we're trying to do, this is exactly what we're trying to grow of, of just this excitement," again, to conjugate Spanish verbs. So, I, I took a picture of it and tweeted it out and it was, um, it, it was just a great moment. So, and, and we're looking for more of this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, you're a wonderful partner. Before we go on to the, the budget program, um, we had a gift and I, I did say that it was Appleton was here. She is here to, uh, present. I'm so glad you could come.
I guess this is the formal presentation.
Yeah, we're all present. I'm excited.
Look on the floor right in front of your chair. Or is that something else? I was checking the business office. So, just for a late, uh, I am on the grants committee of the Classical Education Foundation and I'm pleased to present a check for seven hundred and fifty dollars for environmental science independent study, water testing for, uh, three seniors who are doing an independent project.
We, we did, um, we did already accept the gift in anticipation of the arrival. We, we approved it. And we, uh, I also made a comment that without gifts like this, we really couldn't make some of these opportunities for students happen. And we're very, very grateful for you and for all of the, the people in town who are on committees and in organizations that do things like this for our students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Michael's going home rich. We have with us, uh, the building leadership, uh, for our budget, uh, program. And are you doing the, are we out there to the slides? We're gonna start with the Facebook so we can get to. I don't know if you wanna change the agenda and, I think the Senator and Representative first.
Um, well, that would be up to Representative Moschino and Senator O'Connor. Would you like to listen to, to the budget process of our meeting?
Yes.
Are they gonna say no?
They might have some interesting tidbits for us, so. Please make yourself comfortable, have a seat.
Can I ask a quick question? What's the timeline looking like for the budget presentations, is, in your estimation?
How long's it gonna take?
Yes.
Very fast.
I mean, I, I don't know what you're presenting exactly.
Brian will be careful.
At least half an hour?
At least half an hour.
Half an hour.
Do they have a minute?
Yes.
Up to you.
I'm fine.
I mean, do you guys have a half hour, 'cause we're starting ten minutes late?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian?
Brian?
It's gonna be, uh, too long.
How was that? Michael, can we also get copies of this?
Yep. So, we did ask, uh, for much in the budget this year, the enrollment projections I just posted and you can see where we're gonna be next year. Uh, basically the same numbers, but unlike the elementary schools where you're basically dividing by a certain number, our one thirty-one in, in eleventh grade is gonna play out differently in junior, senior electives and US history classes and what the effects of, of the bubble kinda moving through are really gonna play out in what the student course elections are gonna be. We don't know that till the end of April. So, we'll have to make some decisions there. Our priorities for next year really are to focus on cultural and climate. Um, I think it's important, I think all of the research that we have suggests that, that we really need to continue with our social-emotional learning strategies. We need to deal with student anxiety. We need to increase our faculty's capacity to understand what an inclusive school looks like and cultural competence and make every kid feel valued for his or her unique person and create unique opportunities for them to, to thrive and, and to be confident and resilient and go into a world where they're gonna be faced with challenges that we can't anticipate. And, and for me personally, I think that that is more skill set driven than content driven. And, and I really wanna focus on that next year. So, those are our priorities. Our proposed bus- budget is really a, a level service budget. So, we had asked for a couple of things which were all deferred. We asked for our halftime social studies teacher to be made full-time. That was in anticipation of that one thirty-one in, in June of the year. Uh, we've asked for some social studies texts. We feel pretty confident that we wanna actually, we can live at the high school with, with what we have now in terms of sociology textbooks and stuff like that. And Jim Willis, the department chair, wanted to really kinda see what the social studies changes in the middle school look like before we purchase some, some materials. The chemistry and geometry texts are texts that we have deferred for several years. They're getting old, the geometry texts are nineteen ninety-eight, chemistry's two thousand and six. And the English texts are Beowulf, so we feel pretty comfortable that... We can find some copies of Beowulf.
Story hasn't changed.
Rosebud.
So that's really our budget proposal. There's no significant changes. The stuff that we want to do in terms of relationship building, I think we can do on a pretty short shoestring budget. And I think we can still make some pretty good strides. Say, have you noticed this neat, this neat, like, organization?
So, middle school. This we already spoke about. This is the action plan. You will see this in most everything that I do this year, because this is completely driving the middle school. So it's what's driving us, so it's going to keep coming up. But these are the pieces that I've already spoken to. So this is us this year. Changes for school year 2020, so changes for school year next year. We're going to be adding, we're going to be looking to add a chorus teacher. So we did a needs assessment, and what we found through our needs assessment is that we have one faculty member to service 347 students in band, chorus, and general music. So we have one teacher doing all of that. We need more. So we're looking to, and that same music teacher then services two-thirds additionally of that population two times throughout the day, because we're looking at band and chorus. In addition to that, we are expecting, so there already is a lot of interest for the musical arts in the middle school. In addition to that, Deer Hill's robust music program that they instilled this year, we're expecting as soon as next year to have really positive consequences, even more, you know, excitement for the musical arts. So I bring that up, and the conversation is around, we have a really tight budget. So how do we gain a .1 chorus teacher with little impact on the budget? And I look at having three wellness positions. So if you're looking at phys ed, wellness, and health, under the wellness umbrella, which it is. It is under the wellness umbrella. I have three of those. So I have three teachers in my building that do that with one teacher that does all the entire music program. So we're looking to restructure. We're looking to restructure a wellness position for a chorus position. Our current teacher in that wellness position is a... He's not counted on the list as far as how long he's been there. And we're looking to almost have a pretty clean swap of getting a chorus teacher at above the same level to have as little impact on the budget as possible. We've looked into a little bit, it seems very possible. It seems very possible to get a good quality chorus teacher at about the same level as a wellness teacher that we're looking to.
I think it's also valuable to, the assessment was based also on the program that was organized last year as wellness for the whole child.
Absolutely.
We talked about the mandatory wellness course that Mr. Ford is teaching to grade nine, and looking to incorporate more of that kind of structure at the middle school. Also, the bubble is moving to grade nine. So that bulk of students that we needed are moving. Our music students are still in the sixth and seventh, but the enrollment bubble is moving up.
And so again, we're looking at the action plan moving forward. This I only spoke about briefly. So this is what we're looking at next year and going forward. And I spoke to quite a bit of these already and what it looks like going forward. The reason why I have some of them highlighted in yellow is those are the ones that they're probably going to need money. The ones in white, we have been doing and will be able to do with, as Brian used on, or verbalized on his slide, you know, with pretty low funds. The ones in yellow are definitely going to take, you know, to be able to do some of these things, to be able to do it right, to be able to move forward, to be able to do the work that we need to do and the great work that we need, that we're going to be looking... I mean, there's no specific plans for any of these, but the reality is, is looking at those, you know, some of these funds. We've had, we've done some of it already through CEF grants, you know, some of our project-based learning. What we've done through our project-based learning has come through CEF grants. And we're still going to go to the grant room, we're still going to be looking for grants, we're still going to be doing all of that as well. That is it, Brian.
We had in our first budget pass and part of the NELMS report was a recommendation for a full-time adjustment counselor, guidance counselor for the middle school, another one. Is that going to be on the deferred request list?
It's not in this year's budget.
It's not in this year's budget, but... Yes, it's deferred. It's deferred. And it's something we still feel really strongly about.
Yeah, it's definitely a rising need, and we've gone back and forth about how best to fill that, exactly what that need is and how we're best to, how that person fits in, whether it's a guidance counselor, adjustment counselor, something related to special ed. So we're still kind of taking a look at it. But the rise in number of kids, you know, it's growing.
And the defer is absolutely noted and needed. But some of the components of teaming and, you know, UDL and SEL are really incorporated in teaming. And as some of the sixth grade teachers had noticed that, or had verbalized that when you team, there are higher levels of connections with students in different ways. Not that that's going to solidify, or not that that's going to take place with an adjustment counselor. We're hoping that will help with the overall situation.
And I have a question, too. How does the trimester schedule work with some of the changes that you want to implement in the middle school?
So the actual trimester schedule, we're not looking to change as far as, you know, it'd be in the 60 days, if you will, of these. And there's a lot of components to that, so we can't speak to that just yet. Because if we're adding a music teacher, sorry, if we're adding a chorus teacher along with a band teacher, that opens up some elements of what different schedules may look like. That will then have a better placement for the other specialists.
But still within the trimester, should it?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, still within the trimester.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm here to talk about Deer Hill's budget proposal. And I wanted to start by identifying my priorities and our school priorities moving forward. As you may know, Massachusetts is shifting its kind of denotation of the RTI model to a multi-tiered system of support. And I found that that was a really nice anchor and really spoke well to the things that we care about at Deer Hill, the academics, the behavioral piece, and the social-emotional piece. And so as one of my top priorities, it is continuing with social-emotional learning and overall student mental health and wellness. And then looking at that MTSS model in terms of meeting student academic needs. As I will show in a coming slide, our math curriculum implementation and support, we've done wonderful work in terms of ELA, actually, all of our curricular areas. And it's time to really turn our attention and emphasize our math rigor. And also, to kind of dovetail on what Brian was saying, really looking at cultural competency and responsiveness. What does it mean to be an inclusive school? What does it look like? How does that, how's that integrated not only into our SEL practices, but our academics? So that students are not only seeing reflections of themselves, so they're not only looking at a mirror, but they're also looking through a window and looking at other cultures and other practices, and how do we work together as a global and inclusive society? So going back to, in particular, the math piece in terms of a priority, I wanted to highlight some data from our MTAAS data from last year. Looking at this chart, it shows how we compare in ELA and math with the state. And as you'll see, we're doing quite well and definitely performing above state-level markers. However, when we look at the difference column, you'll note that we are performing at a higher level in ELA than math, and that's success and something that we're very proud of. And again, emphasizes and underscores how we would like to shift our attention and bolster our math to meet that same level for our C. And that also noted that this is representing how we compare against state levels. But these trends were also reflective when we look at DART schools, which are similar schools profiles, as well as just how students perform. So how do these priorities translate into our programming and things that we do? So in terms of SEL, student mental health and wellness, currently Deer Hill had an opportunity this fall to do a one-day seminar on responsive classroom. It does not train our teachers, it introduces, dips our toes in the water. We would like the opportunity to pursue that further and really train teachers, which is a four-day training model, to do that first tier of training. It's really exciting to go into classrooms right now and see evidence of that work and teachers that have had training in the past and how they are doing research on their own and implementing practices on their own. But I would love to be able to take it to the next level. At Deer Hill, we are looking at adding an adjustment, looking at our adjustment counselor usage and adding an adjustment counselor that we would share with the Osbuds. So that would, that's a definite budget implication that would address our SEL needs and priorities. Our health teacher role, we are lucky to have Patty, a health teacher this year who has done a beautiful job also integrating SEL practices. It's moved far beyond nutrition and the typical workings of the body, that's an important component. But she really has done some lovely lessons on making choices and what affects our choices. She's brought Officer Taylor in and has really impacted that SEL piece, and we'd like to continue with that. What we are currently calling the workshop model is a pilot in fifth grade. It goes along to speak to the sixth grade teaming presentation. It's a what I need time. It's an opportunity for students at all levels to access curriculum in a supportive way. It's happening in four of our six fifth-grade classrooms this year. It's an all-hands-on-deck approach where the math specialist, the reading specialist, the sped team is working together to, instead of introducing new curriculum to reinforce concepts at levels where students are. And so that's something that supports our student mental health and wellness in terms of not only their self-concept, but also their academic success. That workshop model definitely translates into that multi-tiered system of support. It's something that we plan to extend across all classrooms and grade levels next year. And so it's a working smarter, not harder type of mentality and really using our time effectively. Along with that, a big shift similar to what's at the middle school is we're looking at making some important adjustments to our schedule to impact our academic success and efficacy. And so we're looking at a aligned start/end times for our schedule right now. Our, you know, block schedule is a tricky word, but it's that idea that all of our specialists will start at the same time throughout each part of the day so that we can capture every moment and allow for more enhanced teaming in some of these workshop pieces. Right now, you might have a fourth grade teacher going to art at 1:00, and then her team partner goes to music at 1:10. And so it just, it sets them off throughout, and I think we lose some time there. And so I'm a strong advocate for aligning our schedule, and we're working to make that happen. In terms of our math curriculum priority, next year will be a curriculum review year. And so that will be an important focus as we get teacher input and make sure they did some beautiful work this summer, but there's definitely next steps to be taken. Dreambox is another concrete program with some budget implications. It's a software program that was utilized with the percentage of our students this year. We'd like to double the number of students with access to Dreambox. Right now, it serves as part of our MTSS, and we want to expand the availability of that for more students. And then again, that workshop model will directly impact our student math success and the implementation of our math curriculum. In terms of looking at the cultural competency and responsiveness piece, that responsive classroom training and implementation will go a long way there. Also, really looking with a critical eye at our instructional supplies. What books are we buying? How are our social studies textbooks reflecting the messages we want to send? What kind of literature are we using? And it moves beyond really overt examples to more subtle things. An example I like to use is back when I was at Osford, a teacher coming to me so excited about a science book she was using because children of, you know, different cultures and there were children in wheelchairs in this book about how animals camouflage. And just building that awareness about all the materials that we buy and how we're representing ourselves. Looking at our enrollment next year, currently, you'll notice that we have 370 students. Our projected has us dropping down to 351. We currently have five third-grade classrooms and six fourth- and fifth-grade classrooms. So we are looking at a decline in enrollment. How that impacts our staffing, or just looking at our staffing overall, as I mentioned earlier, we are looking to add a 1.0 adjustment counselor that will be shared with Osford equally. We're really excited about this addition. I think it, also to your questions about the high school, I think part of our philosophy is that we can get it earlier and really meet these kids' needs and support them and build on that success. I was speaking to my staff and sharing this presentation with them yesterday, and I talked about how being at the Deer Hill this year has really shown me the important work that we do. It's a really important time, third and fifth grade, to get these kids where they need to be and set them on the right path in terms of how they interact with each other and how they feel about themselves. So we really want to support them and give them the strongest foundation possible. We are looking at two reductions at the Deer Hill next year. We are, currently have one and a half reading specialists. We are reducing that to .5. And again, based on enrollment, we are reducing by one classroom teacher. I believe that's my last slide.
So your adjustment counselor is really a .5?
We currently have a one full-time adjustment counselor, and then we will be adding a .5. Exactly, and sharing with Osford. So it'll be, yep, exactly.
And the reading specialist will be, there will be a 1.0. I think you said .5, just to...
Yes, there will still be a 1.0 reading specialist.
I'm very excited, I'm the last one.
No, you're not.
No, I don't.
No, I don't.
Oh, so... No, 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 I don't have a budget, sorry.
Don't.
Still too long. Oh, gee, sorry, there it is. One for the schools.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our budget ideas tonight. I'm going to start with our, the Osford priorities, looking at 2018, 2019 priorities. And clearly, I'm trying to do an exercise on getting your eyes a little sharper. I apologize for the small print. This year, for one of our main goals was to look at literacy. We've brought in the foundations program, which is in K through 2. Kindergarten started it in January. The other grade levels staggered their time in the fall. Foundations is a phonics program that is instructionally based, and it is, solidifies all the instruction, all the way from kindergarten all the way to second grade. The other item that we've worked on this year priority-wise is walk to read. And the best way to probably describe that is if we have five teachers, we take all 102 children in first grade, and we split those children into their ability groups. Plus, we also call in the librarian. We have a computer specialist working with us, we have a technology specialist working with us, ESPs in special education. So we probably have in first grade and in second grade between eight and 10 people working to split up those small groups. And those groups are based on the DIBL's assessments and the DRA assessments and teacher recommendations. And we're on our third round now. Every six weeks, we change those groups. So let's say Ellen is in a group, and she needs special instruction and vocabulary. We do it six weeks, and then we find out that you're ready to fly in fluency. It'd be changed to another group. The plus side is my little students get to be like high school students, and they get to change teachers, which I think is kind of exciting and moves the day along. The other plus side to that is the first grade team gets to do much like the middle school team is doing as far as teaming, and they discuss fall students. So it gets the teacher outside their classroom looking at the whole grade level. And reading specialist is now working in kindergarten so that a lot of the students she sees in kindergarten, the students that are maybe showing a little bit of difficulty in learning their letter sounds or doing rhyming, we're catching them early. The earlier we catch them, the better off we are, which would then lead to Deer Hill seeing our successes will be benefit to them when the students at the third grade. The other piece is writing benchmarks. We are constantly looking at the writing that we're asking our students to do. And tweaking it a little bit is that, are we getting results from the students that next year's teacher can use? Are we seeing them grow? A great piece of that is every Monday morning, students write a journal response. And we get to, A, learn about what they did in the weekend, B, we get to see them grow a little bit. And they, by the end of the year, they get to see their own growth along with their own. Very exciting piece for me is the data meetings. The data meetings are common planning time, and we have our, the teachers have their planning time each day. But at the data meetings, every six weeks, we talk about what the students are doing, how they're doing, if we can move them, if we should move them. And that's based on the walk to read. So to walk into a classroom where six to eight teachers are talking about students in general and where the child's going to be for the next eight weeks and getting what they need is really exciting. That's probably the highlight of my... That's probably the highlight of my year this year. Uh, social emotional learning, we had last year, as Alex had mentioned, this, Alex's school this year, they did the overview for responsive classroom. Last year, we did the overview. We had eight teachers that went out for training this year over the summer and will be having training again for the rest of the teachers, smaller groups. The best part of responsive classroom is again, when you're walking around and you're listening to the students in the morning, they have morning meeting and the teacher will send a topic out. They'll talk about something. The absolute best part is to see them sitting in a, a square and they are introducing each other. And I might say, "Good morning, Barbara. I hope you have had a great morning." And then back we return, teaching, teaching, "I hope you had a great morning." It's always communicating. It's making eye contact. It's making sure that as a public speaker, you're doing a very nice job, which if any of you have students in college, they still have the public speaking course, which I think everybody hates. If we started that with students when they're younger, I think it would make a huge difference. The eye contact, listening and being respectful is huge. So our Osford priorities for next year, we need to, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot the bottom part, which is really important. Our social emotional, our school pledge every day, the students come down, they do announcements and they say the school pledge. The second part that we've started since January is during this, after we say the school pledge, I ask them to think about what you decided for your school pledge. So it's not just their reciting a pledge that they learned in September, but now make sure that you're being respectful. What does that look like? So the students in the morning, when they do the announcements, they talk about that. And this year, we adopted the motto, which I think probably will go with these students for a very long time, is, "It's who we are, what we do." Again, I think I've mentioned several times, we don't pick up a piece of paper because we're gonna get a prize for doing that or because the teacher's gonna praise us for it. We do it because it's who we are, what we do. So again, that's probably the other piece that the Osford community is very proud of. So for next year, literacy, there'll be the completion of the curriculum template, the implementation of the documents that we have. Social, emotional, responsive classroom, the training will still continue and we'll hopefully see that growing throughout the building. Math, as Alex mentioned, next year will be a math curriculum revision, so we'll be working on that. Science curriculum, it will be continued work. Social studies and science is very important to all the grades for our four-year-olds, all the way to our eight-year-olds. But in discussing that, we also need to remember there are only so many hours in the day. And we hammer home the literacy and the math, so we're trying to incorporate science and social studies to all of those areas. And cultural competency, just looking at the world as a whole, you know, what makes us different, what makes us the same, giving us the opportunity to want to meet people that are different than us. Projected enrollment for two thousand nineteen, two thousand, twenty twenty, pre-K, there'll be two sessions, roughly thirteen students with twenty-six students altogether. Kindergarten, as we stand right now, we're looking at ninety-four students. That would be five classrooms. I believe we have one family that's looking at update their choice. So our ninety-four students in kindergarten would be five classrooms. Grade one for next year will be a hundred and one students and that's five classrooms. And grade two would be a hundred and five students and that's five classrooms. Train, uh, staffing transitions for two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty. Professional staff transitions may occur with a direct correlation to the decreasing numbers in enrollment at the JLS. Enrollment numbers will dictate the equity of the class size. Anticipated professional staffing will be five full-time teachers, nineteen students per class for kindergarten. Grade one, five teachers, twenty students per class. Grade two, five teachers, twenty-one students per class. The numbers, the, the numbers show there will be a staff decrease in grade two because it will be going from a hundred sixteen students this, um, this year to a hundred and five students next year. The reduction of the health teacher at the Osford is also anticipated for next year. As Alex mentioned, we have a very strong health individual that's teaching that course at the Deer Hill and the Osford right now. But due to our schedule and due to the fact that we put health into the curriculum in areas and reading and science, the health person, I think, would be best suited at that for the, the, um, Deer Hill leading into the middle school. Right now, the, our day is completely packed and filling in that health piece is a little difficult. And the health, um, phys ed teacher does a lot of the health curriculum also. Additional resources needed, the addition of the part-time, point five adjustment counselor that's been mentioned, that will be shared with the Deer Hill to address, address social emotional needs of entering kindergarten students, to support students in grades one and two into assistant transitions. To the, um, important part of the assisting and transitions is for kindergarten, we have our preschool, four-year-olds coming in for the very first time maybe to public school, reaching out to the preschools, finding out where those students are. And supporting the person would be allowed to support the students and parents. There is a lot, there are a lot of parents that are coming to kindergarten for the very first time and parent education is really important. I always tell the parents when they come in that the students are so excited in September and then we get to that in November time and they are so done with kindergarten. They, it's like, it's, it's not new anymore. So a lot of that is interaction and working with parents. On the other end, we are very fortunate that we, at the end of second grade, have a great place for our students to go over at Deer Hill, but that transition piece would be huge. If we had an adjustment counselor that's working with the second graders and then follow them when they're over at Deer Hill to have a friendly face, I think that would be huge. And I just wanna take a moment to thank the administrative team for their continued support, the Osford staff, the Osford families, for the strong partnership that's been fostered. That's it. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, um, you actually have a question? Anything you asked or you didn't get? Is that a lot of questions? No, we have to, you know, define.
Yes, it's, um, everything we ask for, we're, we're settled with.
We're settled, okay.
Thank you.
So your foundations, materials, you're, you're good with that feeling like that can get implemented?
Yes, the whiteboards that the PSO has purchased for us and a lot of the materials that we have will sustain year after year. Um, so we, and it was that, sorry, it was that beginning kit that the teachers needed that really kept us going.
Okay. You know my love for foundations.
Would you put in door? No. No, 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 no.
Sirens.
I was thinking a disco ball was gonna be there.
Yeah, I was like, that's what special ed is all about. So budget overview, vision, statistics, you know, we have high expectations for all students. Funds, supports and resources to enable, all to meet or exceed our expectations. We collaboratively support an academically challenging, safe, prospective student, positive learning environment and prepare all students to be responsible citizens in a global digital twenty-first century environment. So that's sort of, I, I think that correlates nicely with sort of everybody's sort of hope with what we're doing. We're looking for things to, for schools to be inclusive and accepting and we're understanding the importance of, you know, SEL as part of what we're doing, you know, on an everyday basis. Some statistics, so in district currently right now, we've got a hundred and thirty-two, no, two hundred and thirty-two students in districts and special ed. We've got eighteen students in out-of-district placements for a total of two hundred and fifty. And as we've done with our quarterly updates, that number fluctuates on a, you know, daily basis determining, you know, because people that have been found eligible and other students that have been found not eligible. But that's, you know, a ballpark of, of where we are regarding that statistics. So our priorities, we wanna continue to assess our special education programs within the district. So that's looking at, you know, our partial inclusion programs at Osford. We've got the Stars program. And then we have, you know, a similar program at Deer Hill. And then we've got additional programs at the middle, high school level for students that are not fully included in the general ed setting. We wanna continue to foster our inclusion, inclusive education by supporting co-teaching. So next year, we'll be at the middle high school from grade six to eleven. And then also at Deer Hill, we did incorporate co-teaching into the fifth grade classroom, which from what I'm understanding, you know, both the special ed and general ed teachers are doing that. I mean, my hope would be that that, that's how we're providing the majority of our, our services. The continuation of ongoing professional development for special education staff, so making sure that our special ed teachers remain experts in what they do and they have the resources and the supports in order to be able to do that. Continuation of social emotional learning throughout the district to include executive functioning, school-based counseling through Gosnell at middle high school. And again, not an additional adjustment counselor, but supporting what, you know, the, it's at the elementary school level with a point five in Deer Hill and Osford. And the hope is that we're providing tier one, tier two and tier three interventions at that level. So we've got out-of-district tuition. We've got our public school and collaborative tuition support. So this is anticipated for next year based upon the IEPs that we currently have right now with a three percent increase for the collaborative and public tuition. So we have four hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Private school tuition, that is, and that is the anticipated amount with a three percent increase. We do have several of our schools that have let the state know that they want to increase the tuition significantly. But again, this is based upon what we currently have with that three percent increase. And that total is one million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, maybe six dollars for our out-of-district tuitions total. Special ed transportation, so that's transportation for special ed students that's identified on their IEPs. And that total is three hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. That's not for students that are riding a regular transportation, but it's for transportation to and from school. And then we have our medical therapeutic contract services. So those are services that are delivered to students as indicated on the IEP. Some of the things that that would be is applied behavioral analysis, nursing. And that falls under, if we contract with an agency to provide those services. And that's anticipated to be a hundred and eight thousand dollars for FY twenty. And then again, the additional staff, that one point, oh, so at Osford, we have students that are transitioning into kindergarten. So it'd be an increase of one point six ESPs to meet the requirements of the IEPs. At Deer Hill, there are no additions. I didn't wanna put the school adjustment counselor again on there. I thought that you may, you know, think that, I know that you would think, but I just wanted to put in there as well. And then no additions at the middle high school. We will be adding co-teaching at the eighth grade level, but we will be able to do that with the current SNAP that we have. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
When do you do, or, or start taking in requests for spring evaluations for next year for students that are not on IEPs?
Every day.
Every day?
Every day.
Okay.
Parents can request, so parents can request an evaluation every day. Teachers can request an evaluation every day. As long as school is in session, then somebody can request an evaluation. So if somebody were to request an evaluation on a February vacation, that wouldn't go until the, that wouldn't go until the day after the vacation. But as long as school is in session, parents, teachers, guardians can request an evaluation.
Then your, your early interventions, are they on a sort of more regimented timeline?
Um, so it's not, as soon as we get information from...
When they're gonna transition?
But we get information from, um, early intervention, usually in September, we've got a, we get a list of sort of like, who will be turning three. And then we are not given the names of the student or what the disability category that EI has at, so early intervention is identify them. But they will give us an anticipated date that a child is turning three.
Gotcha.
But even when we get those lists, we can't tell whether it's just sort of a clinical judgment that they've made that evaluation, whether it's somebody that's just getting speech a couple of, you know, maybe thirty minutes a week or whether it's somebody that is getting full programming. So we don't get that information until a student is, usually about two years, eight months. And then we go to the home and we have a meeting and we do an intake at that point. We still, so we will have fourteen, we will have fourteen, or up to fourteen places in preschool for special education students. And then we'll also have students that are, have walk-in services for that as well.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for having me. This will take two minutes. I had some great props for you. They were given to the IT department from, I believe it was the fifth graders. It was homemade thank you cards. All were about three months ago. It was really great. It made us all feel really good. I wish I could've shared those, but unfortunately after three months of hanging around, they were filed.
Filed?
Lasted new ones. Staffing levels, to give you some contrast, staffing levels from our current fiscal year to the year coming up are essentially about the same. We've added a few hours to our database admin to assist with us with implementing a new student information system. So Kaygel will be assuming a new role as part of her overall data admin position. The expenditure budget remains roughly the same as it was last year. It's approximately a three hundred thousand dollar budget between salaries and expenditures. And I don't anticipate that being a problem as far as maintaining that. We do have a new student information system, which costs us a little bit more money to maintain that as time goes on. We've enhanced our security and surveillance systems in town, specifically the schools. We have another project coming up, just for some additional services that will tie to security and surveillance, so that's a good thing. And cloud print services is something else that we're, we're adopting, so that will cost us a little bit more money. But it's needed, especially in a BYOD environment. Enhancements to the FY twenty year include security initiatives. So essentially, the BYOD introduced some hurdles and some obstacles for us to get over. We've had a few dips in the road that we were able to navigate and came out in a positive direction. This will allow us to increase our security in a BYOD environment while giving us flexibility for not only our students but our staff to manage their own credentials without IT interaction. So it's a very, it's a very positive thing. Device replacement, this has been a big topic as far as capital budget goes. As you know, Windows seven is at end of life, so we need to replace those devices with something else. We've done some work with a number of different teachers in both the middle and high school and we've come to the conclusion that we will replace one of the labs in the high school with a Windows ten workstation, approximately thirty workstations. And the lab, the language lab inside of the middle school will use Chromebooks. Now, both solutions will leverage the same software, a new software solution that we're going to implement. So that gives us a lot of flexibility. And the difference, or the reason for the difference in the two operating systems is for the AP needs in the high school, which isn't, isn't needed inside of the middle school.
Have you, has that gone to capital budget yet?
It has not. It's probably going to be introduced to them next week.
Okay.
MCAS and CBT management, this is something that we track. We spend a lot of time with, with the principals and assistant principals with managing MCAS testing. There's a lot of moving Chromebooks, there's a lot of configurations. The replacement with the Windows ten labs going to Chromebooks will actually help us cut down on the amount of labor hours that IT does to manage that process. So it's a very encouraging aspect from my perspective. We'll be able to do more with less as far as that goes. Cost reductions from efficiencies. SNAP is a new health database that we implemented this past summer. SPED, which is Mary's application, is going to be phased out and the new student information system will now incorporate that. So we'll have a seamless interaction or, or integration with data. That will cut... That will cut down on do-teep punching and much better data as far as that goes. Collaboration with the schools and municipal, this is very exciting as well. We work with... We're, we're working to, to conjoin both municipal and school resources, sell plans, copies. And right now, we're currently active in managing that, so that's a good thing. Lastly, we're all about service in the IT department. That's what we do. We like to feel like we're a little bit involved with, you know, how, how the kids are doing. We, we try to provide the best services we can to make sure that devices and the technologies are working. So that's, that's core to our function. We have begun to, over the last year or so, train individual IT staff to make sure that they can be a champion of... We have begun to, over the last year or so, train individual IT staff to make sure that they can be a champion of a particular technology, whether it be Office 365, whether it be our Windows servers. We have dedicated individuals who are receiving specific training to make sure that they are champions of those. If help desk requests come in, those people are the people that field those now. So the turnaround should be, and has been faster. And lastly, custom interaction, smile, life is short, recognize the simplicity of interactions, that's a natural thought. We have great people working in there. They come to work with a smile on their face, they're a pleasure to work with, and I couldn't be happier without staff. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I see how much we've done. The next item on, uh, the superintendent's report is a fee vote, but, uh, it was discussed with the athletic director and I think they wanted to postpone that. Uh, until those two years, um, together. The last one is, we talked the last time about, um, the need for, uh, the restructure in administration in the middle and high school. So that, um, I did say that I would speak to the staff and assess, um, exactly what the hesitation was or concerns that were about changing the leadership structure to a principal for the high school and a principal for the middle school, and an assistant for each of them as well. I did meet with the sixth grade team, uh, they invited me to their, um, common planning, we had, uh, over an hour worth of discussion. Uh, I met with the entire staff of the middle school, uh, and did explain, you know, trying to get some of the hesitations on what the concerns were. Um, they were minimal, uh, it was more overwhelming that, uh, the middle school was looking for its own identity. And obviously, as, as I've been, uh, saying, you know, as Carrie so, uh, expertly explained, it's a unique learning environment, and it's that one time when, as I've said before, it's the one time where we can set kids on fire for learning. And it's a very specialized area. So I am asking for your vote to change the structure to a middle, uh, high, middle school principal and assistant principal for the middle school, and a high school principal, and remain the existing assistant principal position that we have. Okay. Um, anybody have any comments or questions, discussion?
Am I ready to vote?
I am, I'm sorry.
Go, go Jen first. Go ahead.
Oh, um-
You can go ahead, Mariah.
My, my question was gonna be, the middle school principal is not a one point O standalone assistant principal?
Right now, we're hoping it can be.
For, for next year?
That's what we'd like to-
Okay, that's what my question was.
Looking at the, the budget. Ideally, what we've tried to do and what we've been looking at where our, uh, budget allocations are, ideally, we would like a one point O principal for both and one point O assistant for the middle school as well. It may be that in a budget situation, it would be a teaching position and part-time assistant.
Mm-hmm.
If we can make the numbers work, we would really like it to be.
I feel like we could vote to move to the structure, but-
It, it's just a move to the structure.
Right, and I don't wanna vote on, we are having a one point O assistant principal at the middle school, right, the second, so that's different.
Correct. Yeah, is that- Yeah, right, it's just the structure that we want.
Yeah, that's different.
We tossed around any number of things and have not decided on any other than we need to separate the two, to the positions, whether it's part-time or full-time. Ideally, it would be great. I don't know if we can do that. I'm not sure if it would really, it needs to be that.
So all we're voting on is a middle school principal, one point O.
And an assistant principal in some form, so.
I think the wording just has to be clear on what we're voting on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not, I, I'm, I'm, um, a little feeling a little foggy about-
Then we can set up the two. Yeah, I think we need to separate them.
Feeling a little foggy about, about this assistant principal at the middle school because it's new.
The assistant principal position itself?
At the, at the middle school.
A full-time principal and a full-time assistant principal is- Is new. Let's divide it. What I really need right now is a principal for the middle school and a principal for the high school, both one point O. Okay. Okay, all right. So any other questions, comments?
I'll make a comment. I, I just, I think with all the talk we've had about the social emotional learning and creating your own environment at the middle school, I, and thank you for the research you've done in with the staff, because that's important, but I, I think it would, will pay benefits in terms of creating its own culture and improving social emotional well-being of our students.
Right. Right. I, I was never a fan of one school and a combined culture. I think that middle school and high school are very separate people, very separate groups. And I think, I feel very strongly that the middle school needs their own identity. So I am very supportive of this.
And thank you for all the work that all of you have done on, working with teachers and outside organizations to collect data on it.
Okay, do you have anything else you wanna say, Jen?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm excited. I think that what we saw here tonight, there's an excitement at the middle school. And I think we wanna support that. And I think that when I have thought about the developmental difference between an eleven-year-old versus a seventeen-year-old, it's so striking to me, and it seems so natural to me that in order to support each developmental stage, that we have, um, a support system that can sort of talk the language that eleven, twelve, and thirteen-year-old kids need versus a language around what a high school student needs. And, um, I think this is a step towards, um, creating a vibrant middle school and a vibrant high school where we're just paying attention to the different developmental needs. And I, and I think it's a, it's a positive move, um, it's a move that, that you researched. I wouldn't ever want, just take my opinion, um, the NELMs came in, this is the recommendation they made. They're experts in middle school, so I, I think it's a really exciting time, and I am supportive of this.
Okay, so we need to take a vote.
Mm-hmm.
So could I have a motion to approve, um, just have to think of how I'm gonna say it, to approve, um, posting? Or a-
The establishing of a separate-
Es- establishment of a-
Two different sessions.
Middle school principal position and a high school principal position. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Um, let's do a roll call.
Hi, Paul Kearney.
Hi, Laura Steffan.
Hi, Gina Stino.
Hi, Eleanor.
Hi, Jen Maddick.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
That's great.
Um, there we have it. Uh, I would like to look at the structure of the middle school and come back and discuss that. Great. Um, we have visitors who have been so patient. Very patient. So much. Uh, I hope this has been just as exciting for you as it has for us. Uh, I'm excited about listening to it. I think it gives you an insight into who we are and, and how we, uh, plan our money. So, um, I would like to introduce both, um, Senator Patrick O'Connor and Representative Jeanne Bush. Michael.
Hey, how are you?
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. I just got on your side of the call.
I actually wish we brought a PowerPoint now. We have one for you that we, uh, reached the middle of. Listen back a bit, it's me too.
Thank you.
See ya.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Why did we bring in that topic?
I don't know.
We could put you in front of the pool.
That's all right.
You know, I was actually, I was actually thinking that that might be a better idea going forward.
Just get a specialty.
In front of the pool, the pool.
Oh, sure.
So thank you for the invitation to allow us to present. I think that this is the third time myself and Representative Muschino have been here. I think that I was here one time before, um, and, uh, it's, it's just great to be able to see all the inner workings of what's going on here for Hasit Public Schools, being able to actually see that coming from twelve years of municipal experience. Uh, and way with just a few towns over and knowing the challenges that our school districts have now with tight budgets and increasing fixed costs and everything else that, uh, comes into play when, when putting this together. It looks like you have for school year twenty twenty, a, a solid plan in place. And I think it's a huge credit to all of you, to the administration, and of course, to the teachers and, uh, principals and, um, assistant principals of the schools you have there, so, uh, kudos and congratulations on that. And I think that, um, I'll, I'll kick it over to Joan, but we just wanted to bring an update as far as the financial approach that we're seeing at the state level. Uh, this year is definitely unique, uh, in that regard because of the, um, discussion and movement towards achieving foundation budget review commission recommendations. Uh, in addition to that, there's, um, quite a bit of legislation, uh, that has gained some traction as well. We wanna talk about that could have an impact, and also some of the things that we were able to get done and pass, uh, last year, so, Joan?
Uh, it's just always great to be with you, um, and in IT as well. It's nice to think of IT were someplace that you'd go and, uh, when you're in a moment of frustration, that they'll smile at you, actually.
And they, and they smile here, and make your day better.
Yeah. But it is, it's, uh, it's just, it's very exciting to hear about your initiatives and, um, the investments that you're making, um, in your children, in your students' children. And, uh, certainly, it's exciting to see the successes on the MCAS boards and the successes that you've had, um, and, uh, who you're extremely focused on. So, uh, it's nice to feel like we're a small part of that in whatever way we can support you, uh, both through legislation and through, um, state funding. So we were just gonna, as you said, walk through some key legislation that got introduced, um, talk a little bit about what we passed last session, um, go into, um, budget priorities, these, I know circuit breakers always know dirty hearts, and, um, of course, the chapter seventy is going on. So, uh, if you want, we can just dive right in, um, on a quick recap from last session. Uh, as you'll remember, um, probably less important to Hasit, but, uh, the LOOK bill, um, was one that we've, that we passed, um, which is, basically gave school districts across the Commonwealth, um, the flexibility to choose, um, uh, their EL programs and how they develop English learners one of those, uh, which was really quite exciting, I think, um, that it elevated, um, you know, for training and certification programs. Um, so that was certainly acting of a big change back to, towards the way that we used to do things. So that was exciting, um, to have the school districts have the flexibility. Um, and then certainly, last session, uh, we also passed the civics bill. Uh, it was exciting to hear you talk about that for the middle school and head to what that might mean. Um, but obviously, now they're in the process of developing all of the, um, um, the curricula, and so it'll be kind of exciting to see-
Civ projects.
Civs projects, how that'll work out for the eighth grade students. I, I'm particularly excited about that. And I'm sure, um, in a place like Hasit, um, I, you'd have so many engaged students, I'm sure it would really be delightful to see what they come up with. Uh, and then, of course, uh, we took some of the first steps last session of budget around, um, foundation, um, budget review, the commission, and moving forward, um, of course, the big piece with that was really around, um, funding some of, um, staff costs, um, around, uh, retirement, the health and that sort of piece of it. So that was a, a first, I'd say, first significant commitment, um, towards the, um, the review and moving forward, uh, to see through the recommendations, um, so I think that'll be an exciting piece for us to talk about in this coming session, so.
Yeah, and, and I was, uh, as the ranking member on the education committee for the state, I was, I had the privilege of being on both the LOOK conference committee, which was great, and it was the exact same makeup for the LOOK conference committee as it was for the foundation budget review conference committee. And I had the privilege of being on that too, and it was unfortunate that we couldn't reach a compromise. We fought very hard for the Senate position, which would have been a one hundred percent full implementation of the healthcare costs for special education costs, uh, for English learner costs, and also for the economically disadvantaged school districts. Um, we got very thorough into separating school districts into separate deciles and trying to come to some sort of compromise. But at the end of the day, I think that it came down to just straight finances, and, um, some folks in leadership on both sides, in my opinion, were unwilling to move on, uh, on that specific, uh, initiative. But now we have basically all three coming to the table this time with the governor, as we'll get into a little bit later. The governor's filed his bill, the House has a bill, the Senate has a bill, so I think that this is the year that foundation budget review gets, uh, addressed. It depends on how long the implementation period is going to be, and also where, uh, and how we find the revenues to, uh, fund this.
And I, I would just add that, um, I, I feel like they got, got very close last year. Um, and certainly on the House side of things, um, I know you have a new chair of, um, of education on the Senate side. But the House side, um, we have the same chair that was reappointed this year, and I, I do know she is very excited to, um, get back to it, um, to get, to take it up early in the session. So, uh, there's a real commitment to find that path forward, um, and, and I'm pretty, I think, I think it's pretty exciting to think that, uh, that, that those things will all start to, to move into session, so I think we'll have some, a lot more to talk about later, so.
And there's more advocacy groups and nonprofits that are popping up too that want to specifically address foundation budget review and what it means to all the communities. I had this conversation with, uh, Secretary Pfizer at the start of this session that I felt that although we absolutely one hundred percent need to address the economically disadvantaged school districts and the lack of funding that they're getting in catch-up from nineteen ninety-three, that we can't at the same time let suburban school districts fall behind when it comes to certain areas, specifically charter schools. And that the reimbursement formula, although that's also changed in the governor's bill, that the reimbursement fo- formula is woefully inadequate for, uh, at least three of the school districts that I represent, to the point in time that they're getting basically no state assistance anymore because the charter school tuition costs are completely eating up all their chapter seventy increases.
Right, it's crazy. It, it really is crazy, the, the way that that's worked out. Uh, but I think, um, what a lot of the dialogue around it, and what you see in the various, um, forms of the bill, whether it's the House, the Senate, or the governor's versions of the funding, uh, is that genuine, um, desire to address some of the structural poverty issues, um, and to make sure that, it's an acknowledgement, I think, that it costs different things to educate different types of students, and that, um, you can't expect, that we can't expect the local municipalities to do it all on their own, and that, that that's something that the state really can do and, and should do. So, um, I think that it's safe to say that at the end of the day, all school districts will see, um, see something. Um, it might be modest for some and, and more significant for others, depending on the populations of students you have. But, um, but if, I think that we will s- you will see that all students, all school districts will, will see a bump up, and we'll see, we'll see some improvements in the funding, in the f- in the chapter seven funding, so, uh, would you agree?
I would.
Yeah. Uh, and so we have some slides there that really walk through all of the different, um, acts that we wanted to go through.
Yeah, so there's the Promise Act, which is, um, Senator Chang Diaz's bill. I'm a co-sponsor of the Promise Act. Um, and I know Joan's a co-sponsor of the House version of-
The Tucker bill, yeah, yeah.
Of, of, of the Tucker bill. It's just, there's a lot of bills out there. Everyone wants to, um, everyone wants to have a seat at the table when it comes to addressing education reform because it's been since nineteen ninety-three that we haven't really had significant reform. So this bill essentially would, uh, call for one billion dollars in new state funding, the bulk of which would go to the school districts who have the greatest need amongst the Commonwealth, um, amongst the Commonwealth communities. And essentially, it would account for districts' healthcare costs by using actual data, uh, to get insurance costs and inflation rates from the foundation budget. It would modernize the formula to provide adequate support for English learners and low-income students. It would more accurately account for special education costs to better reflect actual special education enrollment and the total cost that the school districts bear for out-of-district school placements. It'd increase state aid to certain districts to mitigate the losses of, to charter schools. And it would guarantee a minimal, a minimum annual rate of fifty dollars per pupil, uh, which we have fought for tooth and nail. Every single budget that I've, I've come across, it's, that's the biggest one, is to the suburban school districts that aren't going to realize a lot of the other resources that are out there that the state's committing through various programs. That's, that's the biggest one that we can fight for and try and provide for, for the school districts that, the bulk of the school districts we represent.
Um, I would say just, um, by a point of comparison, um, the Tucker, the, the bill filed by Representative Tucker, I'd say the, the biggest dis- the difference really is, um, it's the same goals, it's- I'd say the, the biggest dis, the difference really is it's the same goals, it's the same essential numbers. But the piece that I think they were really trying to get at during the final days of the conference committee were really numbers and an understanding of what the rate should be for students living in poverty. And so, instead of making, um, uh, including some things in there in specifics, what the, his version basically does is calls for a commission to study to get that information on a short timeframe and to, um, and to really, they were looking for some more hard business. I'd, I'd say that was probably the biggest difference really between the two bills. It is the Senate version is very specific about it. The House version is seeking more information and more data. And that would, but basically to the same, to the same point, to the same goal. So.
But something is definitely going to get done this, this fiscal year. It may not be in this budget, but something is going to get done as far as implementing Foundation Budget Review. And I think that with a push again for the millionaire's tax, which was filed by Senator Jason Lewis as a constitutional amendment, not through initiative petition, but actually through legislative petition, is I, I think that that's what they're looking at for a funding vehicle when it comes to putting, putting this in play. And that would be on the ballot in twenty twenty-four.
And I think at a minimum, there seems to be a real commitment to take those, the second part around the healthcare and supplement the funding there. So, I mean, I think we'll definitely see important things come out regardless, at least in this first budget, regardless of what does or doesn't come out during this session. And I'd say that the goal is what, twenty twenty-six for the full, is that the right date?
Yeah, so, so.
I think the twenty twenty-six is the full funding, is when they want to do the implementation of everything.
And the governor believes that you can do this without raising taxes and do it over six years, the same way they did, the same way they did education reform, which full implementation was over a six-year period of time too.
Yep.
So, that's the, tho, those are sort of the two, uh, the two bills in play. And then the Cherish Act.
Oh, so the Cherish Act is actually kind of exciting. One of the things this put a lot of advocacy around is funding available for higher education. So, we're doing a great job getting kids out of high school and then, and sending them on, but we're making it tougher and tougher, at least in the public schools, because the funding has rode it so dramatically. I think it was like thirty-one percent since, over the past, since like two thousand and one. So, there's a bill that got filed that wants to restore funding to the public higher education schools, so the public universities and community colleges, back to the two, I think it's the two thousand and one levels. And quite frankly, they would also freeze tuitions for a period of time. And it's really just about access and equity to make sure that higher education is accessible to all students in the state who want to do it. So, it's the first time it's been filed, so it will be exciting to see where that leads and what the testimony and advocacy is around it. But it's, it's actually an important one, I think, for, for our districts to keep an eye on and to be supporting, to try to get that funding back there and make sure that college, we put the premium education. You can't apply to anything now without being able to check that box of at least associate's, if not a bachelor's degree. So, we have to really make sure it's accessible to everybody.
There's a bill for high stakes testing to place a three-year moratorium on high stakes testing. This has come from a strong push from the Massachusetts Teachers Association as well as some student-led groups that, you know, believe that there's just an over, an overburden on the school districts as well as the teachers and, and the students in general from a continuation of high stakes testing and at different age levels now. So, this is basically a pause to everything that's going on and to actually figure out by using members of school committees, administrators, students, teachers, the testing companies in general and just saying what do we, how do we come up with a better strategy than just continuously having test after test after test?
And then there are a couple of bills that have gone to file this session. This is your refile. It is mandatory recess. And basically it is what would, would dictate that a certain amount of time be dedicated to recess each year or e, in the, in the day for, for children. And one of the, it was interesting to hear some of the testimony when it was presented last time that apparently there are school districts out there that withhold recess as punishment. And so, it, it's, uh, it's interesting. I don't think it's something that would necessarily impact our school districts. So, I think all of our schools do really well in this regard. But, um, but it was really shocking to hear that, um, that there are places where children, that, that was filed by, um, Marjorie Decker on the House side and, um, Michael Rush on the Senate side. So.
And then Joan and I filed a bill on classroom temperatures. This came from a meeting that we had in Halt where a lot of teachers got up and just said that it's unacceptable, the current level of, of classroom temperatures. And I know that that's been an issue, especially with the fluctuating weather and everything that we have, both hot and cold as far as in some of the schools that we have, that we should be at least looking into this issue. And this legislation calls for a commission to be created to do, do just that and have meetings and hearings and talk with those who are on the front lines of this, our teachers, talk with administrators, talk with certain school districts and communities to see what financial constraints they may have in order to get this done. Potentially create a grant program to allow school districts to apply for certain monies that the state can, will be, be made available to, uh, to, to fund some of these initiatives. But this is something that we really wanted to address because we continuously heard it from, from teachers throughout our travels from the district.
I think if you think about how the information might be used, if you think about the school building, SBA programming, you could get an SBA capital, uh, grant for, say, your heating system for your, for your boiler, your hot water heater, but you couldn't get it for your air conditioning system. So, this is the kind of thing that they could take that information and, as Patrick was saying, develop a grant program that could then, you know, upgrade and that hopefully inform like what you, what you, if you were doing in your school or renovating, what your program might look like and what other kinds of interviews you're doing. So, it's just infusing the whole resiliency piece and making sure that there's air quality and that sort of thing. So, yeah, it's going to be interesting to see.
So, that's just a, a, a study, permission, it's a bill to put a study in place.
Yep.
Yep.
As I sit here with my coat on.
I know, it's kind of hard to, it's hard to think about that. It's so cold out there today, but if you remember that first week of school, you know, some places, yeah, every, everybody had a different strategy and, you know, there were a lot of planties and it was fine, but, but we did hear about some horse livers.
Mike just wants to keep us awake. If you call it Vegas, it's good.
Got to remote control over here.
We have ears on this event.
I'm all by myself.
So, the part that you really wanted to talk about, I'm sure, was, was certainly the budget. So, at this point in the game, where we're at is the governor, as you know, has filed his budget, House one, that came out at the end of, um, at the end of January. It feels like that was so long ago. The House has recently appointed all of its committees. I mean, do have a new chair of House Ways and Means, Aaron McQuitts. And he has started the process to meet with all of representatives. Everyone who wants a meeting with the chair gets a meeting with the chair to go in and bring forward all of our, our priorities for our districts. Introduce, really, I use it as a way of introducing our district to him and the kinds of things that we need and to make those small asks that we can for the budget process. Once that, those meetings are all done in mid-April, the House Ways and Means will put out its version of the budget. And then we will have budget debate and pass it off to our colleagues on the Senate. So, right now what we have in front of us is the governor's, you know, fifth of your twenty twenty proposal. It's all in front of you, one hundred and twenty-nine point nine million to fully fund the Foundation Fund with base aid requirements, thirty million to increase for help to municipalities with rising cost of the, um, uh, employee and retiree healthcare benefits that we were talking about. If you recall, last year, we funded the first piece of it. Was it like six hundred million? I feel like it was, um, last year. It was, it was a substantial, it was a substantial, substantial chunk towards it, and this is the second piece. Then there was thirteen point six million increase for education learners. He's put for a twelve, twelve point eight million to support the highest concentrations of economically disadvantaged students and a hundred and six million for charter school reimbursement, which is good for us. And then, as we have talked before, it would really be looking ahead to twenty twenty-six for the full, um, um, really, the full rollout of all of the recommendations for more than a billion dollars worth of investments increased in these schools, schools, uh.
And this is a, this is a baseline, so we usually expand off of this and add. But we, the House just passed today a supplemental budget where they decreased twenty million dollars from what the governor had presented. And that's because December, January and the mid-numbers for February have come in about four hundred million dollars off estimate. We believe that this is just a, a, a result of the national tax reform that was voted on and that there's a concept to it where there's the salt of state and local taxes. And so, usually the taxes come in in December. They didn't come in in December this year. Then they thought they would come in in January. They didn't come in in January. Then they thought potentially they'd come in in February and they haven't come in in February. So, we think that potentially a lot of the high-income tax earners are waiting until April in order to do this. And then the second, the second, because before they used to get incentives to do it, but now they don't get the incentive. So, you know, why not try, you know, you look at the market and try to potentially make your earnings there and not give the, the state government your money quicker? And then the second aspect is the market itself and how volatile that's been, especially towards the tail end of twenty eighteen where you saw these massive dips and massive climbs. That volatility has led to a decrease in capital gains from where, where our benchmark is. And then it's the deferred compensation, deferred, deferred payments under our tax, under our tax structure. So, talking today to Ways and Means, they hope that they, this is made up just over the other months. This is just sort of a glitch that we used to expect this in December and it's no longer coming in anymore because there's no incentive to do that.
And I, I haven't heard anyone express real concern about it yet, but they are watching it closely. So, the supplemental budget that Patrick referred to was when, at least the way that it was presented on the House side, I think about your special town meeting, right? So, you have your town meeting and then you have your special. And it's where you switch things around. If things came in higher than anticipated and lower than anticipated, then you switch items from budget to budget. That's what we're basically doing with the supplemental budget. So, for example, LiHeat, which was, is the program that low-income people can get fuel assistance from in the wintertime. The governor put forward eleven million. The speaker thought it was critically important that we put, make sure it's fully funded. So, he's put forward thirty million, but it was moving around and accruing up. There were some collective bargaining agreements, contracts that were in there, you know, a slightly smaller number because then as things get filed, some of the numbers were estimates and now they were able to true up some of those numbers. So, that's why you saw some of the changes and decreases. But then there were other pieces where they just felt that they would continue to watch certain line items and wait just to make sure that we're tracking with our revenues in a responsible way. So, yeah, so that will head over to you guys.
Yeah, so, so our hope is that these numbers come in the same that we had budgeted for. And then when we bring the budget up in the House and the Senate, we can increase on some of these numbers. But as a baseline, what the governor's proposed is a huge commitment towards education as far as just where we were last year compared to where we're going.
Yep. Need to see it through.
Yeah, two hundred and three million dollar increase to five point one billion total for Chapter Seventy. And that's off of a twenty dollar calculation per pupil.
Which we would hope would, would go up for our advocacy in the budget process. So, we just had a slide in there to show your fiscal year nineteen, Chapter Seventy charter school reimbursement and the, the anticipated increase under the, under the governor's budget. I think it's fair to say that if our revenues hold, that, that, that would be, as Patrick said, your baseline and that you would see hopefully a slight increase over this year's budget through the, the advocacy of the House and the Senate side. But I think you can feel confident that it will not diminish, that it will really, as long as our, as long as our revenues hold, that you can count on what's in the governor's budget. They're very, I, I think they do D R, D R and, and have did a really good job in terms of forecasting the revenues. And, but it's always a process of fine-tuning the number, tracking and things like that. So, but I, I think they did a pretty good job. So, I think that would be a very reliable baseline.
And as you can see from the, uh, the Coacit sort of in-a-budget glance, the real, and it's, it's not even that much, sixteen thousand or just under sixteen thousand dollars would be what you'd see from the big push that the governor's making right now. And that's the charter school reimbursement line item. The rest pretty much is status quo. And then you look at the expenses and the expenses continue to climb too because the Commonwealth doesn't have, in my opinion, a strong system in place to reimburse for charter schools after, right now after the first year, but realistically even on this new structure after the third year. And, and that just is a continued cost throughout the entire education of the child. Yeah, Circuit Breaker, this is the one thing that I think is a, a very good, it's been very strong. It's sort of the one thing that we all agree on, that we need to get this up and to make sure that our commitment to our communities is there in full. It's a eleven point two seven percent increase to two hundred and ninety-one, to three hundred and twenty-three million dollars. The reimbursement rate for fiscal year nineteen is still being calculated. And when we called over, they said it would be available on Friday. So, when we get that, we can send you an email and just let you know exactly what's going on.
Um, I think there's a commitment, at least I'm sure on the Senate, but on the House side, I just spoke to the chair to fully fund the state's portion. Last, if you recall, last year, there were some pretty dramatic increases in the cost of the tuitions that caught the state by surprise. But I think they're tracking that now much better. And, you know, through our supplemental budget process, we got as close as we could last year. But this year they really got their eye closed in on it and there is a commitment, at, at least I spoke to the House chair on, on fully funding the state's portion of those, of those costs.
Question on that. So, you heard earlier, our Director of Student Services says she built into her public and collaborative and private school out-of-district tuitions for next year, three percent increase, but she had heard that certain institutions were lobbying for more. We vote on our budget in less than a month's time and we don't know if the Circuit Breaker money is going to be there or not or what the tuition increases are going to be, how we manage that.
So, so keep in mind that your Circuit Breaker is a reimbursement.
Right.
So, what you're getting this year was based on what you expended last year.
Last year, right, right.
So, it's always a lag.
Right.
And I know that a lot of times when there are changes and differences in what gets submitted and then what's el, what you're el, I think your eligible costs are like, what, one point three? I can't remember now, but, uh, 'cause I forget across the four towns.
Yeah, right.
But, um, but so what they'll do is, you know, you're submitting what your costs were and then, then you kind of go from there.
Yeah.
And so, it's always a lag anyway in terms of what you're actually spending and voting on in this budget.
Right, right.
So, I don't, I know that doesn't really help answer the question, um, but.
Just to clarify, when you're saying fully funded, we're talking about what, a full percent, what percent are we talking about?
So, you. So, so the way that Circuit Breaker works, right, is that there's certain extraordinary expenses.
Yes. Yes.
So, you have to have qualifying expenditures.
But it's been like seventy-three-ish percent. So, that's what I'm asking. Is it going to go to one hundred percent?
Yeah.
Seventy-five, yeah. Seventy-five percent.
Or we're, we're, fully funded is seventy-five percent, right?
Right, right.
State statute, when, when they put it in for state statute, they basically said seventy-five percent is, is the state's commitment towards, or towards funding that.
Right, right.
We have not been great at meeting that.
Right.
And it's always taken more money in supplemental budgets in order to even get it up to that seventy-three, seventy-four percent.
Right. No, I know I've been lucky the last couple of years to have it in the seventies. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so, but that's a commitment. So, as long as all of our, um, our budget revenues hold, that's the, the, the.
And, and I don't disagree. I think that there should be better ways to budget a lot of these things that the state's done. It's just been, sort of, you get into a routine, this becomes status quo and, and then that, that just is sort of how it is. We're, we're working on trying to do a lot of things to streamline the process a lot, a lot quicker and make it better for local communities. I think the Municipal Modernization Act did help with that and hopefully we'll take another shot at that in the governor's next term to even further, you know, make the partnership and relationship between the Commonwealth and the communities as strong as it possibly can be.
I was going to say that the Modern, Modernization Act has helped a lot because we created the stabilization fund. But to, to deal with the dips, the, what can go up and down, but I mean, it's just shocking how, how, where you can find yourself any given summer when you're contemplating the start of the school year and thinking out what you might have.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you can't know who's going to move into your district or, and.
No, and, and for a small town like this, it can throw your budget so far out of whack. It's crazy. It's scary, actually.
It's, it's interesting too because one of the things that we, you know, we, I hate to say track, but we do, we know who our students are and, you know, we're so good at identifying special. It's it's interesting too because one of the things that we, you know, we, I hate to say track, but we do, we know who our students are and, um, you know, we're so good at identifying specialties early on. So as they move through the system, both locally, if they stay in one spot, you know, we we know what's coming, we can address. But as as people move around, that becomes a challenge and but yet, I mean, if the state actually, I I would love to see us shift to something where that those dollars just followed the child no matter where they went
Yes, yeah.
to try to even that out because if generally the commitment is at the seventy five percent, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say, it should be a more like reach like pooled kind of a account that can uh can deal with all the various districts, um,
Right. Yep.
what's going, it gets people shopped and it's it's just, it makes it a whole crazy situation sometimes.
Yeah, it's the answer.
And the last thing is um the new funding opportunities, so the governor changed the way in which large vendors file their sales taxes. Um, before they could hold their sales taxes for about fifty days, uh, just based off of old laws that were written that said you need to transmit this tax by X date. Um, and now he's basically saying that you have to do it within the month you receive it. So that's going to provide over a hundred million dollars in one time revenue. And fifty million of that, he's going to send back to school districts in the form of grant programs. Um, I believe that the the first one, which is thirty million dollars to help school districts address their school safety needs, is going to be three rounds of ten million dollar grants over three years, um, eligible to any school district. And then the uh the twenty million to help school districts eliminate lead from school drinking water is going to be run by the Abatement Trust Fund and I think it's ten million over two years. Uh, is sort of what they're they're outlining right now. This can obviously be changed or increased or or decreased as it goes through the budget process, but this is something that I truly believe is going to be a a major opportunity for the town of Cohasset and for so many other communities who are looking for school safety initiatives and looking for a partner on this. Uh, that the state has has put up money, uh, thirty million dollars over the next three years to address this. And this is something that myself and Representative Muschino would love to help out as far as as we go through this grant process, making sure that the needs of Cohasset are at the the top of the list.
Can I ask, uh, Weymouth, hundred sixty three million for a middle school, uh, Moshfield, hundred and five million, Tucksbury, uh, hundred and ten million, Situate, seventy million. Cohasset, we haven't spent, we haven't gone any money from the state as far as building uh facilities. Uh, one of the things is, uh, is it because we're not asking for it, like, for hundred sixty three million to go to Weymouth? And we can't do thirty thousand on a study for safety of our kids being brought to school? Where would we get thirty thousand dollars and where can we get some of these hundred sixty three million? Because is it because we're not asking for it or why is it all these other towns building these beautiful schools and we're not
Well, the town, the uh, it's all about funding to be perfectly honest, and a hundred and sixty three million is the price tag, the MSBA is not uh putting up that that amount of money.
Right.
So who, the town of Weymouth?
The town of Weymouth is going to do an override on April thirtieth to try and see if the taxpayers wanna um for
Yeah.
For a hundred and sixty three million?
Uh, no, it's for the it's for the portion that is not covered by the MSBA. I, and the portion from the MSBA is fluctuates, but let's say it's thirty five million dollars, um, somewhere somewhere in and around, um.
So you actually have to put up the bond, so when you do a school building program, um, it's a lengthy time to um develop the program to the there's a series of um grants for actually developing it, putting together the the application, submitting it, um, design, build, the whole dis- the whole bit. Then once you finally get your application in and if it is actually approved, you have to take it to town meeting, you bond the whole amount. And then, um, then it gets reimbursed over um over time, I I think at certain points as the building program goes along.
Right.
Uh, and then what happens is each school district, um, they have different reimbursement rates on the projects based on a a whole variety of factors. Um, how actually, I remember this goes back probably fifteen or almost twenty years now, um, but, you know, we got an amazing reimbursement, um, based on, you know, increasing enrollment and uh student socioeconomic, uh, the different things. So, you know, we might have gotten, say, a higher reimbursement rate than when Hingham did their school. And so there's a range of reimbursements that, you know, just it just depends on who you are and what what you're doing. Um, the big numbers, uh, 'cause Hingham, one of our other disc schools, is um actually actively pursuing a grant now. Um, but one of the big challenges is that, um, a lot of the the buildings now are high schools. And so they are just, they're the, you know, instead of like, think about how small the houses, the different ones are, elementary schools are just much smaller, but those high schools are really big.
Yeah.
And the cost of construction has gone through the roof, so that's why you're seeing these really big dollar projects come through and get and get, um, and getting approved and getting built. One of the challenges has been, um, the way that they do it is year to year, so it's a five hundred million dollar bond that the state offers every year. Um, and then one of the bills that got filed, I don't know if you saw, like, I can send it to you, but I I just happened to catch when I was reading through, is increasing that bond from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty million just to expand our ability to start to meet some of the um deferred capital needs that are across the Commonwealth. So it it's the, it's a vibrant program, it's an excellent program, if it's something that you should ever decide you want to pursue, um, you know, we're having to make those introductions and help you navigate.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
But it's, um, but it's it's, you know, it's, they're just big projects.
Well, for our district, we're trying to separate the middle school from the high school, so that would be a reason to try to come up with a plan to do that, correct? It's like, you take into consideration not only the money but the need, correct? 'Cause we have a big need to separate the high schools.
There's a lot of need, I will just caution you that, um, there's a lot of need out there, uh, I mean, when you think of some of these gateway cities and some of the projects across the state that have just gone unmet for so for decades.
Right.
Um, it is highly competitive and schools often apply numerous years before they get, um, up to the threshold.
Right.
And part of the problem is there's no plan, there's no like B list, right?
Right.
So not like, say, the lib- you went through the library building process, it's not like that where, you know, you can come off a waitlist and they just, they sort of work it over five or six years. This is year to year and you never know, so I I know that like one school came in just under the threshold, so if they funded, say, sixteen schools, you know, they would s- the eighteen.
Right. Right.
Um, you go back into the pool, you don't know who's going to, um, who's gonna apply, so you have no idea who your competition is year to year.
Right.
So you could actually apply a second year and be lower on the list. So, uh, just be thoughtful about how you, you know, approach it, but, um,
It's kind of like legislation, right?
Right.
You just gotta keep refining it, but if at least you have a good plan in place, at least you, at least if we could go out and ask, you can't get any money unless you ask.
Keep, yeah. Yeah. But whatever you choose to do, we are here to support you.
We haven't been asked any money. Okay, thank you.
That's it, if there's anything else that we can do, um, you know, as we as, a- as we as we said at the beginning, we think that this is a, you know, a really marquee school system in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts and it's because of the work that all of you put in uh into this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have two quick questions, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, one, and I saw this on social media, so take it for what it's worth. And I couldn't, I couldn't screenshot, it was so small on my phone, but somebody was commenting that there's a bill in the House to prohibit youth football up to grade seven.
Could we run you that?
So apparently that is true.
Thanks for that.
Uh, it was in State House news, or or the media looked at State House news, but I saw a little article on that, so, um, I've already, so my dad, who was a football coach for years, has already called and told me. My brother called me, he's like, we have to talk to you. Um, apparently it's true, I'll have to go find it, um.
Okay. I am just curious about, huh, you're signing?
It is, I saw that. I did see it, I did.
It is, it is.
Oh, it's you, it's you, okay, so.
Eighth grade, I thought it was eighth grade.
Yeah.
It is definitely filed.
It is definitely filed.
It is definitely filed, okay, and then I saw another one, um,
I I take it that you don't concur?
I can't speak for the committee, as a mother of two sons who play football for eleven years each, they're fine, never concussion, I thought it made them better men, but that's just my opinion.
Yep. It worked.
Um, so, uh, there was another bill I saw, House Bill five sixty four, relative to the disclosure and use of certain student data. And it actually had a lot to do with, and after it went through the there offs and the where, you know, with regards to and all of those, those legalese that I kind of glazed over on.
All the legalese.
It had to do with, um, mining student data for use in marketing and advertising or something about the
Please tell me the bill prohibits it.
Oh, five, five sixty four, Bill five sixty four.
What is it?
I can't look. Go ahead.
And like I said, I couldn't get through, I couldn't digest the whole thing because it was a little, it was a little too technical for me.
I'll take a little
Way up to you.
Thank you. But, oh, by the way, um, Senator Corney, you also have a bill nineteen sixty five, Senate Bill nineteen sixty five, can you explain that to us?
Sure, um, that is the, uh, teacher screening bill summary, Bill?
Yeah.
Uh, so this actually came, uh, Paul came to the office and and had presented this. And this essentially, uh, would put a requirement on school districts, charter schools, private schools, when considering new applicants for teaching positions, uh, the applicants must provide. And in a lot of this stuff they do anyway, but it would be a list of former employees and a a written disclosure whether that individual had been the subject of sexual misconduct investigation.
And you sponsored the bill, one one with Patrick Corney, and thank you, my friend.
I did. Yep.
I'm sorry, is the list of former employees or employers?
Employers, excuse me, sorry, I misspoke.
I'll get you a copy of it.
Yeah, I, um, I think that a summary might be in the packet that I gave you, uh, if it's not, I have one right here.
Um, you might touch base with Corney, is she filed a bill on that?
Off the top, uh, just to remind her, what's what is different about that than what is in in place for Desi right now, regulations?
Um, essentially it puts in, um, different sections as far as when the information has to be requested from the applicant, uh, specific failure to, um, you provide this. Uh, we basically got this, we met with the individual from New Jersey, who's a member of the State Senate over there, uh, who filed this on on the, on behalf of New Jersey.
Right.
We met with Desi and Desi said that there is definitely some, um, better oversight that could be presented when it comes to this regulation.
Gotcha, thank you.
A lot of the Corney background doesn't come up, some of the stuff that comes up.
Cor- Correy background, wait, what?
Some of the Cor- some of that, it goes back twenty years as well, right, Patrick?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's again, as as what we said, um, Paul came up and, uh, asked us to file this bill. Uh, we looked into this, I had my legislative director look into this, we met with an individual from New Jersey, we went with Desi, and they said that there's there's some, uh, some merit to filing something like this.
Right, right.
And it was signed by the governor of New Jersey.
Right, I got that, I was just asking what the differences were.
Something that goes above and beyond the Correy and the fingerprinting.
Right, it'd be great to know.
Yeah, so it's a disclosure of allegations or a disclosure of
Like a written disclosure.
So it's, it's essentially the way that the the section two of the bill is written, it's a written disclosure of whether the applicant has ever been a subject of a sexual misconduct investigation, resigned in the midst of a child abuse sexual misconduct investigation, or had their license suspended or revoked due to a child abuse sexual misconduct investigation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, it was a highlight.
Jack was so nice to see you yesterday, thank you.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be, it'll be six through eight, it'll change the whole structure.
He's got, it's sort of been a legal
Whereas now we have five and six.
Okay, that's a March seventh. Yeah, I mean, the boys got the central forty.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I'm hoping to have a girl's basketball.
Yeah, yeah.
And our girls' basketball seems to do really well, I mean, we moved this, we started that.
The building's a mess, I graduated high school, you know.
Second year, we, I've been watching that. Second year, we went five, this year we're twelve, went five. Imagine that, yeah.
I hear a rehab, it didn't get a hole, but a hole with the field.
It's exciting to see them grow. And I actually have a, I don't know if I sent it to you. I will, I'll help you with that.
Good job, you did a great work here, it's okay, we appreciate it.
It's mine, Mark.
Yeah, all right, so we Thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll take a go back. Yeah, well, thank you again, so much, keep up the good work, pleasure, I'll tell Jackie, say.
Good night, everyone.
You got a hat? Are you gonna learn, Connor?
This one that I brought is the last one, I've got it, okay. Louise, I have it. Louise, Louise, I have it. All right, you ready to continue? Okay, so, um, the next is, oh, sorry. Um, reading the policy J I C H, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited, and it's the second read. Does anybody have any comments on it?
I don't.
No?
I, um, what the alcohol, what it it says that this is, right, what confuses me is, what is the ramifications for, what is it displaying action?
Senator Student Handbook, this is just a policy.
This is just a policy.
Oh, okay. But it says
One comment is, um, you okay, Jen? I just, I think it's a good idea for, um, and Louise isn't here, but to let Sandy Crowe know about this maybe, I think it should be on her radar.
Off in the tower.
Yeah, because, um, just so that she's aware of the update and the change. Paul, we had, we had this policy and the the only change is that there's a paragraph added for the verbal screening. So it's really not a sub, it it's just adds what the state is now mandating.
Oh, for the screen, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So.
Also, I can't imagine, I I was, I cleaned through all my, um, papers today and this, I think this must have come from the state, but they give you a sample letter. And it's sub, in their sample letter, this one, one signed by the school principal and one signed by the nurse leader and the principal, which I think is a good idea, so, I mean,
Oh.
Maybe you could send it to the sen- do, I don't, I don't have n- it noted where this came from, I just
Is that the S P? Yeah. They might have one because, um, the district
Looks like it got sent from Mass potentially, it's, 'cause it's bold, it's bold.
Like it came in and out of
In and out of with the legislative update or something, following policy.
Yeah, no, but what I'm s- what I'm saying
But we should circle back, I mean.
This is the S B I R T training, right, so, I mean, the the district did the training on it, um, a couple of years ago.
Yes. Yeah.
They might have that letter already, they might already have something crafted, 'cause they've been doing it, you know.
They, yeah, they have to, I mean, I got one from my other son's school too, it's the same, same deal.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's pretty formulaic. So I guess we have to officially grant with Sammy. But, yeah, we should circle back with the grant with Sammy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, okay, so, do we have a motion, sorry, I thought I saw a typo. Do we have a motion to approve policy J I C H, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I, Paul Corney.
Um, um, I'm over seven, oh, yeah, sorry.
Aye.
Are we going that way now?
Well, we don't have to roll, do we roll a policy?
Yeah, you know, we don't have to roll.
No, we don't move on, yes. Aye.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay. So then the next item is security cameras in schools.
And that's second read, right, sorry, that was the second read, so this is gonna prove
Yep. Yes. Reading a policy E C A F, security cameras in schools. Does anybody have any comments on that?
The only thing we did is we added busses.
Okay.
That was not in
Oh, good. It wasn't in there that it would be on the busses.
Yeah, correct.
'Cause we did add cameras to busses, so we added, yeah, great.
Yeah.
It did on there.
Yeah. Okay, so everybody's good and ready to vote?
Yep.
I just ha- have a quick question, I think it came up the last time, does this replace E C A dash two, that's approved summer third, twenty thirteen?
Yes. Yes. And the question is, do we have to vote to get rid of that? We have to vote to get rid of the old policy.
Can I have another copy of it?
I don't know the rules, it seems to make sense to actually take out the old policy. Can we just vote to say this replaces it? Set it up.
It it doesn't, it doesn't have the same reference?
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, so why don't we do this, why don't we approve this and in the meantime, between our, this meeting and next, maybe our policy gurus could check into what we have to do about the old policy and then we could vote to remove it next time.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so um do I have a motion to approve security cameras in schools, which is file E C A F?
Second.
Second.
Who moved it?
I did.
Jen, Jen.
Paul seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Okay, so if you could just double back on that.
Yeah.
And double check, that would be great, thank you. Okay, next is school committee goals update. Ellen, put the traffic signals in place for us.
So um this update is from our January ninth meeting where we updated, um I guess as evidenced by um the beginning of our meeting, um this first one, I would say we're at a yellow light.
Yep.
Any progress? Um.
I didn't say, on the second one, we're on the yellow light on the the first bullet point.
So we.
Because we do have, we do have the meeting with um
Yeah.
advisory and board of selectmen.
Right, so.
On the twelfth.
Right, I, yeah, so everybody knows um we have a joint meeting on Tuesday the twelfth to present our F twenty budget.
And our budget hearing is part of our next meeting, which will start at six thirty. So yellow's still appropriate for that.
Yeah.
And then Barb and I have talked about two school committee copies for workshops, but we haven't, and we haven't gotten much traction on it. I did think that perhaps the um event at Warp Station could count as one because it would've been informational for people, but it was more committee members that showed for that than people who wanted to run for committees, unfortunately. So we'll have to continue working on that. And then next is establish a program to honor and recognize individual community members who selflessly give up their time or talents to support Cohasset students, and that was yours, Paul.
I think I might have.
I have it here, but I guess I don't.
I have it.
Ellen has it. So it does need a little bit of tweaking. Um on the front cover, you have the um situate.
The anchor.
Anchor.
Oh.
I'll send you, um Jennifer sent me um for the superintendent stuff, our our logo of the ship's wheel, so I can send that to you, so you can put on. And it's and it's just semantics, but I would say the Cohasset School Committee Appreciation Award, not Cohasset School Appreciation Committee.
Right.
Appreciation.
'Cause we're the Cohasset School Committee for appreci- do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Again, it's just semantics, but it's um.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, it's not a committee, it's a award.
Yeah.
Right, right, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're full of appreciation, but that's.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
I'm just gonna jump in, everybody can jump in.
Yeah, that's fine.
I thought the second, I thought the second page was awesome, I think that states exactly what we want to do.
I just said I thought I had.
You might wanna have a heading, like, does it have a heading on that page, like a purpose?
Uh, no, it doesn't, but yeah, it could have a a purpose or or the intention or or something like that.
A purpose on the heading?
Whatever.
Um. So then the next was the steps, I liked the nomination form, I thought it was great. Um. Later in the presentation, Paul, you had like send it to the superintendent's office, I think because it's our award that we're trying to do, maybe it should go to the chair. The nomination form should go to the chair.
Okay.
Of the committee, or a designated member of the committee. That's just, that's just my opinion.
I accept.
Yeah, it's not the s- it's not the superintendent's goal or.
Or.
Job.
Or appreciation, right, yeah, no. Okay.
And and how.
I mean, I I'd be glad to take that on, like even tonight, we saw three people give out checks, I mean I could take that responsibility on the night, should they got the letter or the appro- at least a letter sent out and then I could take the responsibility of taking in nomination forms, I could do it, or.
So I th- were we gonna give them to the principals, the nomination forms?
Well, that was the idea.
Did we? Yeah.
'Cause they'd know who to nominate, um so.
But anyone could nominate, right?
Anybody can, yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody can nominate. So so on on the next point, I'm just gonna share my opinion on on this and um and only 'cause I was involved with the Hall of Fame Committee. And they do it, um the Hall of Fame does it every other year and they have, you know, criteria and it's sometimes, and and it's like one one level of an award. You know, so it's just the Hall of Fame induction, whether it's an individual, a an athlete or a coach or a a whole team. Um and I think that makes it all that much more special as opposed to layers of um, like you have your tiers of appreciation for various nominations, um and forgive me for saying this, but it's like everybody gets a trophy, and I think I think the the when I, was this mine, I I don't know, I think when I would, we were, Jean and I were thinking about this last year for a very specific individual.
Right.
Um who we tried to get him in here to to thank him for all he does and he couldn't show and then we couldn't show and then we canceled.
Yeah, something happened, one thing.
And it's it's really to make, in my in my mind, really to make that individual or that small group of individuals on an annual or semi-annual basis really feel distinguished and rewarded for what they do.
And appreciated.
And appreciated, um. That's that's my opinion. I think once a year is fine. Like at the end, like what's what, to me, what's natural is at the end of the school year, who who was like really outstanding during the course of the previous year. Um.
And then maybe even have a committee that looks at uh people who stand out the most, I guess, I don't know.
Right, right.
Well, that would be, yeah, and and to that point, I think honestly too is a is having a nice letter sent out for everybody who does give money. I mean, we have Moby gave us five hundred dollars and it'd be nice to just send him a letter from us, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That would, are we doing that now or, oh, okay, okay.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, so like C E F P, there's certain things that are, and gifts from, all the gifts we get from the boosters and stuff that all.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And they send.
Well, not the, the boosters are, the boosters.
Right, or does it? Oh, okay.
Kinda like to be private.
Not boosters. Okay, but there's letters that goes up for a lot of the gifts, major gifts that go in.
Yes.
And who sends that, like, yeah?
Yeah, it's it's the the chair.
Okay.
The the money gifts are different from appreciation for for giving of self.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, and that's kind of how we need to think of this, is giving of their self and their time, not money.
So, so you'd say.
It it's a different, it's a it's a different feeling.
So so you would suggest that we kinda look at the Hall of Fame as a um as a as a kind of.
Well, ki- c- kind of.
Pretty few times.
As an example.
As an example, yeah, yeah.
As an a- as an example, yeah.
And that's every two years, where this could be every year.
This could be every year, yeah, um and and they have a committee of, I don't know, six, six or eight, and they get applications in
Yeah, twice a year.
Twice a year.
and uh they they talk about each individual a lot and I remember one year, a dad literally sent in the scrapbook he did of his kid from the early nineteen seventies and all the press releases and things like that, so there's a.
I might know that guy.
So there's a lot, there's a lot, you know, they go through a lot of vetting, they look at news articles, they look at scrapbooks, they look at nomination forms. Um and and so the group discusses the candidates a lot, and then whoever's not selected in a given year, their stuff remains intact and it carries over for two more cycles. So they're active for six years if they don't, if they don't make it, so um and there is criteria, you have to be out of um.
Oh, cool.
Like the baseball Hall of Fame pretty much.
Yeah.
Yeah, like Cooperstown, yeah, you have to, they have to be out of the district for ten years, you have to be this or that, yeah, so I can send you some of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll look at that. Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great, thank you.
So those were just some of my um my comments, the nomination form could be put on the school committee section.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But that's all I have.
Would you put it on the website?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, did I not finish my train of thought?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then do, and then we just, I think, I was thinking we should probably have like a uniform level of recognition for people, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
And and 'cause like naming things or things like that get into a whole separate process and procedure, uh so.
Oh, yeah, we can, yeah. So what the Hall of Fame does is is the award, um the individual award winners get a crystal something or other that's etched with you know, Cohasset High School Hall of Fame, whatever the year is, and then out in the lower lobby of the gym, there there's the plaque.
Sorry. Yeah.
So, um.
And like you said, the recognition, I know a kid that um he plays basketball on our team, but he, one of his coaches got nominated, Chris Conrad got nominated, and he was bragging that he has a Hall of Fame coach.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Coach, right, 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 right.
So I just thought that was cool.
That sounds like condo.
Yeah.
You you know, so, you know, when you start into getting actual awards and plaques and things and having, you know, start
Yeah.
we would have to say, well, we need part of our budget to to support that, I mean I could I could see something over on that wall that has our, you know, you know, community appreciation award.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Right, hopefully we'll all get on that wall.
I'm never coming in this room again.
The National P I P P I P T O organization had a lot of um resources and ideas about this topic.
Oh.
Oh.
Not not for actual nominations, but how like you could visually recognize people if you so chippots and stuff, if you listed, if Google search will render in any ideas. How to recognize.
Here are the um, that's for Paul, that's the Hall of Fame.
Oh, okay, oh, cool, thank you.
Um, some of the the material on that.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so my action point is I get it, I'll send you the um sh- the ship's wheel.
And then maybe we find some of the bullet points to reflect our conversation tonight.
So that is definitely the yellow light. So the next one, I mean, we're still on a yellow light, I I believe we're still on target for in April, um an April report from um the S R O on the assessment, um we've also talked about it extensively in the Safe Schools Committee, Subcommittee of Building Safety and Security um about uh particularly after school safety and security, after the students have gone home, but the buildings are open and there's still staff and students in the buildings and so that's gonna be a component of the assessment. Okay, um short, long-term facility improvements working, that's still a yellow light, we're still working on that, right?
Right.
No, Michael's still working on that, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, so.
It's a, it's a work in progress. We, we'll always be in development.
Always be in development.
Oh, that's a, that's a way out of that one, isn't it?
Yeah.
The next one's a green line because Barb and I went to the board of selectmen and they approved our change, so that's done.
I'm just gonna put a smiley face on my yellow thing.
Okay.
Okay, um green, called.
Sub the res- the reserve fund.
Of the.
The reserve funds, yeah, that's a, that's been done.
The reserve, yeah, okay.
Reserve fund, yeah.
They grilled us, but we had it through, way through.
Okay, good job.
Yes.
Okay.
Um college selection process, it's kind of up to Louise to.
Yep, and I've mentioned it to them, they're not, they want specificity and I said, this is what I can give you, this is what I'm, what's written here. But also um they have been very busy, they have the new MCATs scheduled and they're scheduling, but they're on target. I think I had them forwarded to the end of March, but didn't.
Okay, I can resurrect, um I can send you some specific questions and things.
Questions, yeah. I think I have them somewhere, I think they were sent, Katie had sent them here.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the the next one, I mean, could be green because, but we had, we haven't had our budget vote yet, so it's kind of.
Right.
Let's keep it yellow.
Turned off.
Yes, after the, after the budget vote, I mean obviously we're we're supporting the action plan and the recommendations.
Yeah.
And the vote that we took tonight for the principal for the middle school is one way of supporting that, so.
Yes.
Tracking and assessment, I don't know how I got on this one, for tier two interventions, I don't think I'm on it.
I know, I was like, I'm glad my.
I don't think I am either.
Okay, I'll 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 I'll, no.
I don't remember being on that, so.
Well. Didn't we kind of go over this with the walk to read? Yes. With um teaming. The the addition of the adjustment counselors, yeah, and we and we and when we went over and we reviewed the reading program.
Yes. Yeah.
They were pretty detailed about how they are addressing each.
Here I thought, I I I'm hearing a lot about addressing, I feel like the next stage is that you're probably gonna wanna have data, aren't you?
Your data is your dibbles and your switches in Murphy, you can get that, I don't know what you would want your data to be.
More specific on what your interventions are and how they're working.
So.
Like you're doing interventions, you're changing things, so you just don't do stuff, as obviously you know, and and sit there and go like.
No, I think it's an approach with RTI and our.
Right, right.
That is a, that is a focus, absolute.
Yes.
With the assessment.
I mean, and I don't mean that, I don't, I don't mean that I I want your results right now, but like now, like for the the for the years and before, like this was still my big issue when I was CPAC person, um
Yeah.
is 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 really tracking, knowing kind of who's getting what interventions and how it's working for them, and so now, like over the
Time to track.
over the last four years, now I'm really hearing the teachers talking more about doing tier two and three interventions and being very conscious about how they're doing it. So now I feel like we're at the point where maybe even not necessarily this year, but you're getting to a point where you're gonna have more specific data on what you're doing with those specific interventions and sometimes it'll drill down into specific s- student groups or cohort numbers. And but we, but it feels like that's where that's going, like even if it was a report of like, this is what teachers are looking to do with tracking tier two and three, you know what I mean? Because a year ago, there was still confusion whether tier three was special education and that just got sorted out, so this is what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Just. State really came out and clarified.
Yeah, but like if you ask different people in different districts, you get different answers, and it was about fifty fifty split on whether tier three was better or not.
Right. Yeah.
And it's not, so.
That's right.
Anyway, but that's what I'm, uh yeah, so that that's, I I just feel like even even visibility on and I don't need to be coming, I feel like I'm coming down like, oh, the school committee wants to know this, I'd rather kinda know like the teachers who are like, okay, wow, we're doing these interventions and now we wanna really know what it's producing, like maybe our specific intervention, so we.
Make sure it's effective.
Yeah, so that that's, we've had a really hard time trying to express what, or I guess I've had a hard time trying to express, and that's sort of what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, okay. No. No.
I just, I feel like it's really important, and I'm not saying we're not doing it and that we're not moving in the right direction, but making sure you're being conscious about being accountable for what you're doing in your tier two and particularly your, I I do have a thing about tier three interventions that, and that's been tier three line. So I do, I I I guess, I don't know if anyone else cares about that, that where that is, but I'm going back to it on CPAC, so.
No, I think what we're looking at, right, and what it looks like is the transitive as we've talked with Lisa on Miss Wachter Reen.
Mm-hmm.
Where is your trajectory as far as liberal. as we've talked with Lisa on this walk to read, where is your trajectory as far as literacy is going for the last three years?
Mm-hmm.
Have have these programs that we've put in, the, um, empowering writers, the phonics program.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And it's to address these particular students, are there, where is your trajectory?
Right, right.
We know it's there, but we need to document, I understand what you're saying.
Right, right, so it And I'm even saying, even if you take like what would be just interesting to see a start would be, let's say you have really pretty intensive tier three interventions that a couple of teachers are doing. That would be a place where I would think that the tracking of the tier three intervention was, would be easy to to track, like I I'm I'm
Mm-hmm. Right. Well, it would be very, especially with like the whole, um, data teams.
I'm just wondering. Mm-hmm.
If that discussion is taken place, there's the data right here, so it's in in real blood.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I mean, I think I recognize this is a whole evolving thing, obviously, if the state just had to come and clar- do a lot of this clarifying, it's an evolving thing, I just think it's good to stay ahead of.
Okay. Mm-hmm, right.
I agree. No.
That's a, that's a whole, you get lost in the middle of talking about tiered interventions.
Oh, um, I I bet your reading specialists are doing this, and I bet they have the data.
They are.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a matter of putting it on a sheet, you know.
Actually, our data of improvement through Title One, when we initially did the audit five years ago, the state took our data sheet and made it the example for the state.
Yeah.
To the point where Pat sent it out to to, um, to Sarah to this year to fill out, and she said, I already have that, I already gave it to you, I said, no, that's a sample.
Yeah. Keep going back and forth.
But it was our sample that it was sent back.
But it's ours.
But we have the data, so that she has over three, she has the the students and the multiple assessments in the game, so
That was the funniest conversation.
We do have it, you're right, it's a matter, it's a matter of putting it together.
You could just imagine it actually.
I have it, I guess I have, I don't
Yeah, it was hysterical.
So just give me that paper and then I'm done with this goal.
I think identifying what our tier two and tier three interventions are is important, and then tracking, so I think we can do
Yeah.
Right, right. I think we already have some track.
I bet you do, I bet, it's just a matter of putting it in a form that can be read.
Yeah. Yeah, me too. Because we've talked with with Lisa about can you give me the trends?
Right.
Because we're looking at not just the decrease, dear help, but the increase in literacy.
Mm-hmm.
That we had a problem and we addressed five years ago with the increase of Title One money. That we're no longer seeing that need to that extent. Um, yeah, the data will be important, I, it's clear for me. Okay, and we've already established the, we've got a green light on establish school committee member to the Safe Schools Committee and working with the superintendent, assistance superintendent, supporting initiatives and progress of the committee. So that's that's good, it's an ongoing process.
Mm-hmm.
And then establish a school committee member to the diversity committee in order to support the committee's initiatives and goals for all learners in Cohasset Public Schools.
Is that a green, is that a green light?
Uh, well, I mean, we've made contact, I'm planning to go to the March twelfth meeting.
Green light.
It's a green light because both candidates who are running for school committee are on the diversity committee.
Oh, really?
Oh, are they?
One of them is the chair of the diversity
Yes.
What time is that March twelfth meeting?
It's at, uh, First Parish and it's at seven o'clock and it
Seven, 'cause that's the night of the budget, that's our budget meeting with the, um, advisory and board of selectmen.
Yeah, that's our budget meeting.
Yeah, the budget.
Um.
Is it?
Well, should I go to
Is it at, uh?
March twelfth.
It's in, should I go?
We'll get the notes.
It's at seven.
Twelve.
Um.
We get the notes from this.
Oh, but I wanted to go.
Sorry.
What, is that Monday?
It's, there's another one made for Tuesday.
No, it's a Tuesday, it's a board of selectmen meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
Oh, okay.
At seven, a town hall.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it might not be a town hall, it might be at Willset.
Well, maybe this year's presentation will be really quick with the selectmen.
It's a
Oh, the
Is it?
It's here.
Oh, it's here, okay.
Yes.
Oh, our budget, yeah, it was here last year too.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was it?
Yep.
You read it last night too.
Gosh, I haven't remembered.
Okay, I don't remember that either.
Well, they kicked me out.
Oh, it was much warmer?
Much warmer.
Much warmer last night too.
I know, I was gonna wear a really heavy sweater and I was like, ah, what are the chances it's freezing?
I know.
Oh, well.
Alright, so I will update our goals and some of, out everybody?
Okay. Sorry.
Sorry. I need my school goals folder, I don't know.
I spent six hours today, I think, redoing my papers and folders, my school stuff, I listened to the congressional stuff.
My god.
It's a lot of papers.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is social media commentary. And there have been, over the last several weeks, um, several posts that were they they kinda took a turn that was not very pleasant and just, it was disrespectful. So I passed out this piece from the National School Board Association, um, just as a reminder. And the last line is particularly appropriate. While the digital age surely brings with it exciting and dynamic modes of communication, it also brings with it new and complicated legal issues. So pause before you press the send button, you won't regret it. Um, we can never predict what other people will say, we we're responsible for our own words, but we don't know what those words might bring to us. And there's been a lot of conversation on there about how it's pointless to come to school committee meetings because people don't get anywhere. We've been kind of called names, which is not very pleasant. Um, but I want to make this statement also to clarify the three main functions of the school committee. According to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, we are to set and maintain policies, to guide the district, to approve and monitor the budget, and to hire and evaluate the superintendent. Those are the three main charges of the school committee. Anything that is above and beyond that is not in our purview. So for people who have issues bringing issues to the school committee, they really need to figure out, okay, does it fall within these three items? And I would hope that going forward, um, when I see comments on social media, that they're more respectful than they've been. That's all I have to say. Anybody else? Okay, so do we have any reports from subcommittees and liaisons?
Um, yes. Actually, I'll just, I'll just backtrack and just, uh, as part of the superintendent search, another thing that, um, all of the firms told us is, you know, as much as we vet candidates, candidates will vet us and they will vet us as a school district, as a community, and vet us as individuals and look at our our social media. So, uh, they'll look to see how we work together, um, how how we reflect the activities and of the town, of the district and the town. Um, and so we just need to be cognizant of that.
Thank you for that comment.
Yeah, I meant to say earlier, um, I have some stuff.
Okay.
So, um. This way, so up at the workstation when they had that meeting for the, um,
Thank you.
town committees and boards, I ran into, um, oh my god, I just forgot, Joy Schiffman.
Joy. Schiffman.
Schiffman, Joy Pratt Schiffman, um, who's the chair of the Cohasset two-fiftieth committee, and she goes, oh, here, have this.
Mm.
I haven't been able to go to meetings because they also happen to be on the first Wednesday of the month. So, um, this is just an outline of where they are, they've been working on the two-fiftieth for over a year, the celebration is next year. Um, I'm not gonna go through everything, she said they would be more than happy to come and do a presentation for us if we'd like to see. Um, and I said, maybe in May, after we get through, you know, budget season and and some other things.
Mm.
Um, but twenty twenty's gonna be a big, big year in town.
But we're gonna have fireworks this year.
Fireworks.
We like that.
Yeah, can we do fireworks on my birthday? It's looking even better than that.
I think we could
I think I could book a weekend for my birthday. It's so sweet.
Um, unfortunately, I missed the school council, middle, high school school council meeting Tuesday, um, so I don't know what happened. Um, budget and finance, we, uh, met with, uh, Katie Dugan from the master plan committee. We went through the school section of the master plan, which the efforts of their work are coming to fruition soon for, uh, the town's master plan, and, uh, we just had some minor tweaks and changes to that, um. We haven't seen anything back yet, that was just two days ago, right Barb?
Sorry?
The master plan that we met with Katie, was that just two days ago? We haven't seen anything back.
Yes. It wasn't yesterday.
Or yep, was it yesterday?
That flies when you have fun.
So, I I don't
It's Monday. It was Monday.
Oh, was it Monday? I don't even know what day, yeah, Monday, you're right, it was Monday, yeah.
It was Monday.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, and today's Monday.
Monday, two P M, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so, sorry, um.
You're right.
Must've been, um. That's it for me.
Good thing. While you were talking on this, on the, uh, celebration of two-fifty, I received an email from, um, John Pratt. I'm not sure whether it gets our vote, where to go with it, um, he wanted branding for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, uh, on all uniforms.
No.
But, uh, he said as far as the two-fifty branding, we had been talking about various sports clubs and organizations, about adding the two-fifty logo to their uniforms for the nineteen-twenty season. Uh, we'd also like to have the school teams proudly wear the logo and the bus fleet. And what? The bus fleet on the buses.
You can't, uh, um, the the school uniforms, they're not disposable.
Yeah.
You know, they have life cycles of five or six years and and you can't
Maybe if you put a patch, it can take up, you know.
That's, like, well, that's labor, you you gotta, you have, you have to design the patch, you have to
Yeah, it's expensive.
Maybe a sticker on helmet.
Um, you know, for, I think for all the youth sports that that, um,
Get uniforms every
Get uniforms every year, other than probably youth football and the majors, right?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause the the major league, little league uniforms get recycled every year, but, you know, youth basketball can certainly do it and things like that.
Right.
Yeah, which is
That'd be cool.
I read it and thinking I could not wrap my head around the logistics of it, but you just articulated it.
Yeah, but you're right, the, uh, the 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 youth sports could do that easily, 'cause every year they have new new
Yeah, you can't do it.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do banners and like the jads. Yeah.
Yeah, that would make sense.
They could have it screened on their uniforms, 'cause their their uniforms are screened every year.
Yeah, so I'll mention that to the
Oh, yeah.
What?
The banner could could not go up in the gym.
I was thinking banners, so
Is there a policy about banner in the gym, that it's not sports related?
Just, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I see.
I'm not aware of that, but, um, I mean, I think there are other ways to incorporate the logo into
Okay, I will take care of that, I just have no way to go with that, so
in the schools, but, but, yeah, but school uniform, uh, athletic uniform.
Right, okay, I will, I'll respond to that. What?
What? It's getting spray painted on the fails.
I thought that was
Don't give anybody any idea.
Not on the, not on the shirt.
Yeah, this is gonna tell them.
Please. You were just on TV saying that, just so you know.
They're still talking.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's exciting.
Okay, so we do not have any, oh, does anybody else have anything? No. Okay, we don't have any minutes yet, um, follow-up updates, um, topics not reasonably anticipated, no, but we do have executive session. So, um, do I have a motion to enter executive session for purpose number two, strategy related to non-union personnel contracts? We will reconvene in public session.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Paul Curry.
Aye, Gina Stino.
Aye, Alan Mar.
Aye, Jen Madden.
Okay.